Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 25, 2016. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
And if you would all kindly join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the Father and the Father of the citizens in America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Berich?
Sir, may I speak on this matter?
You may, at the end of the meeting, under the non-action agenda items. You're certainly welcome to speak on that.
Well, that was inappropriate. The Brown Act says that I've considered it during or before the item is under consideration. And I want to put my objection on the record. That's all, sir. Put my objection on the record that this is a violation of the Brown Act.
I disagree with you.
Thank you.
And several attorneys disagree.
I'm on the council who keeps losing lawsuits, sir.
Thank you. Settling, not losing. Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval in minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go on to announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours among the evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronan Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. And the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatacy.org. And then we need an approval of the final agenda. Any changes, Mr. O'Keehan?
No changes.
Thank you very much. And now we'll talk about citizens' business. Citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or on any matter not listed on the agenda, letter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to Kattati City Council Policy 2016-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor makes ten time limit for reasonable time, or a disreveling combination has been requested. So next, let's see. We'll open up citizens' business. Mr. Berich?
Good evening. For the benefit of the folks here in the room tonight, and the folks watching from home, my name is George Berich. I'm a former Kattati City Councilman here. I served with honor and distinction a few years back, and I want to thank all the people at home who are supporting me in my run for city council this year again, and all the wonderful support I'm getting door-to-door. I want to thank everybody for that. I would like to remind the public that I am the last city councilman to ever be elected to the city council. All three of our elected officials here were appointed to the council by their friends on the council at the time, and were later re-elected by using the city manager's office as their campaign headquarters, or unofficial headquarters, anyway. And so with that, I want to bring us back to the last city council meeting where the council brought up this ridiculous idea of an emergency shelter ordinance, which is basically a project to allocate 10 parking spaces directly next to the freeway in Kattati. And how ridiculous this is, and you will note, if you haven't been by there, I would ask you to drive by, there is no sound wall there. The noise there is horrendous. It is so loud. There's no sound walls. There's no redwood trees to buffer the sound like is in my neighborhood. It's absolutely ridiculous. And Mr. Deloso even said at the last meeting, he says, "You know, I understand this is an incredibly small step." And I would have to agree, but also add that incredibly small steps come from incredibly small minds. And I like to see councils do big things, important things, and stop kicking the can down the road, because this project is an embarrassment. Most homeless people do not have cars. They're on foot. To leave them down there in the freezing wintertime in their cars next to that horrendous freeway is punishment. It's abuse, and you ought to be ashamed of yourselves. There's many more places in Kattati for those 10 parking spaces, and you chose the worst spots imaginable in this town to put our homeless. Now, Tammy Taylor was our city clerk here in town, and I want to correct the mayor. I did not want to join her going-away party. I did not want to be invited to any of this. You're missing the point entirely. When someone leaves the employ of the city of Kattati after many years of service, you have a duty to explain to the public that they are leaving so that we can say goodbye on her last night here, remind her what she did well, and remind her what she did not well, and possibly the things that she is being investigated by, by the artistic attorney. And this is very important for our new city clerk as well. She needs to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Berich.
Can I have one more minute?
No, you may not. Thank you. Anyone else like to address citizens' business? Seeing none, I will close it. Thank you. Absolutely.
I would just like to correct the record. I was not appointed to this office. I was elected to this office.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to further that. Mr. Berich is absolutely correct. I actually was appointed to this office. However, I was elected rather overwhelmingly, running against you several times thereafter. I kind of like the records.
Okay. Let's move on. We have some business to do. Do we have any direction on future agenda items from the council at this point? Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes. I would like us to look into a possible report on what's going on with the quiet zones. I've seen that there's some activity that's taken place in Marin County. It looks like they were going their separate ways, and now they're going to do a countywide. I saw that Sonoma is doing something for the unincorporated areas. So I think if we could get a report on what's happening, what's working, what's not working, because there has been plenty of concern by constituents about the train noise. So I would like that to be presented.
Thank you. Any other others want? I think, we had talked about previously, we were going to look at what the wheels in motion, so to speak, were happening down in Marin, and what that might look like, and how that might be something that we might try to incorporate up in this area as far as studies and neighboring cities and communities.
Yeah, I believe we did ask, it was requested, a meeting, last meeting or the meeting before, that we take a look at this as well. So I think there's a strong interest from the public, and I would concur. And I believe what we asked for is just information on the pluses, which are evident, and some of the concerns, obviously, that come along with this, too. And that will give a chance to the public to speak on it, and we get a sense of what the best direction might be.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I think I had also brought up at the last meeting that, in contacting the SMARTboard, that it's, the jurisdictions have to apply. And I think my question was, should we be, do we need to agendize that, or is that more of direction to staff to send a letter? I think we had a quick straw vote that we were concerned about the sound, and that we should do something about it, whatever that something may be, but also that we would look to see what's going on down in Marin. But it's up to each jurisdiction, so either the county or the cities where the train is running through, to make that request to SMART.
The short answer is it would be an agendized item, because it would be, it's kind of a big deal. So we'd want to make sure you understand all the pros and cons before we do that.
Right. And we are...
Yeah, and public comment.
Right. And we are still in the information gathering stage. Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move to approve items A, B, C?
I would second.
And before we do that, I think we want to open that up with a comment, unless we already did in citizens' business, so we don't have to reopen that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, we move on to the public hearings. The first one is for 10A, preliminary design review and use permit for density bonus Kattati Station Apartments. Ms. Parker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. I may ask Lauren if she'll switch us over to the desktop for the PowerPoint real quick. And while she does that, I want to introduce the council to Lori McNabb. I don't think you've met her yet. Lori is a consulting planner who's been helping us out on a couple of projects, and has been working on these for quite a while. So she's very familiar with this project here tonight. And we may need to, yes, thank you, the lights. Just briefly, this is, as you mentioned, the Kattati Station Apartments project. It's a 74-unit multifamily project in three buildings located out on Santero Way. And as you recall, probably back in 2015, a version of this project went through design review and through the Planning Commission, with both of those bodies voting for denial of the project. Since that time, and that was a larger project, that was on parcels located both north and south of the existing development on the east side of Santero Way. So this is simply the northern portion of the project. And just upfront, I want to say so that everyone's clear, I think to the layperson, they won't recognize many changes to the project since that prior hearing, and we'll go through exactly what the changes are. But I think to most everyone, it's going to appear to be the same project, and with some very significant changes aside, it is very similar to the prior project. The difference is that the applicant has applied for a density bonus, which is allowable under state law. And so not so much a different project, but staff put on a different regulatory lens through which we reviewed the project. So just want to say that for everyone's benefit upfront, so maybe it'll avoid some confusion. I'm just going to go quickly through state density bonus, so that hopefully we all have a common understanding, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lori. I generally refer to it as a program. It's actually a few sections of the government code with the intent of providing, allowing market rate development to also provide affordable housing. And so it incentivizes, through bonuses of density, the production of affordable housing. And so it requires local agencies, that is, cities and counties, to grant the density bonus with incentives or concessions to applicants that provide any of the following. So these are the minimum requirements to participate. 10% of the units set aside for occupancy by lower-income households. 5% of the units set aside for occupancy by very low-income households. A senior citizen housing development, or 10% of total units in a common interest development, commonly condominiums, for occupancy by moderate-income households. So those are four of the minimum thresholds that an applicant could participate through the program. And we'll also get into a pretty detailed discussion of concessions and waivers in a moment. So under the state code and our local ordinance, the way our process has worked is that the applicant submits a proposal. So the applicant has, in this case, amended their application and submitted for a density bonus proposal, and asked for specific, asked for a specific incentive. So they guaranteed the low income that they would produce, and asked for that percentage of bonus, and specifically detailed for us what concessions they needed and waivers they needed in order to develop the project. So the local agencies must grant the concessions and waivers unless we can make written findings for any of the following, and these are the three bullet points. The concession or incentive is not required in order to provide for affordable housing costs. The concession or incentive would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety, the environment, or a state-listed historic resource. The concession or incentive would be contrary to state or federal law. So we went through that analysis for each and every one of the concessions that the applicant required, and were not able to make those findings. The applicant has proposed to provide 11% of the units available, restrict those for availability to very low-income households. And so in the left-hand column, you see the increasing, from top to bottom, percentage of very low incomes, very low-income units that would be provided, and corresponding in the right-hand column, the percent of bonus, density bonus, that would be provided in exchange for that percentage of low-income units. So in this case, the applicant is proposing 11% very low-income units, which would yield them a 35% bonus of density. And I want to pause here for a second to explain the discussion that we had at the Planning Commission, because as you saw in your packet, the Planning Commission did ask us to consult with the city attorney regarding the number. And one of the commissioners specifically pointed out to us that we had applied our local method of calculating fractional units, or assuming the number of whole units based on the fractional amount. Our local regulations have sort of a standard mathematical equation. If it's less than .5, you round down. If it's greater, 5, .5 or greater, you round up. And specifically in government code, it requires you to round up for all of the fractions. So the applicant was providing, was proposing five very low-income units, which actually equated a 10.4%. And so the commissioner's question was, have we passed that very basic threshold? And when we went back and looked at the numbers, the answer was no. They should have provided six very low units, and staff should have caught that. And so the difference that you see tonight is that the number of very low incomes, units went from five to six, over what was in the Planning Commission packet. And we're happy to go into more detail about the numbers if we want to. Here, and I'm going back now to, not specific to this project, but what density bonus regulations allow you to do. An applicant's entitled to the following concessions or incentives. If they need one, or they apply for one concession, they need to provide at least 10% of the units to very, excuse me, to lower-income households, and at least 5% of those to very low income. And I won't read all the verbiage, but it's basically, the slide is just showing you that the higher number of concessions that are needed, the higher number of affordable units must be provided. In addition to the concessions that are required, local agencies are also required to grant a waiver of any development standard that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction or the development of a project. This project is asking for a mix of concessions and waivers. The Design Review Committee and the Planning Commission was asked to look at those waivers requests. And through those meetings, we were not able to find different solutions that would allow the project to go forward as proposed. So what you're seeing tonight are the same set of waivers that have been with the project since staff evaluated it. In addition to state density bonus regulations, the project always has, excuse me, also has to meet the city's inclusionary housing requirements. Specifically, with our regulations, are required to set aside 15% of units affordable to lower-income households. And again, with our regulations, those are required to be a third restricted to very low income, a third restricted to low income, and the remainder to moderate-income units. As we get into the math, it's important to understand that we cannot impose our inclusionary requirements on the bonus units. We can only impose those on the base units for the project. For this project specifically, and Lori will get into this in more detail about the base number, but essentially, the parcels were allowed, the development of 48 units, that's what the specific plan envisioned. 15% of that gets you to 7.2 with our regulations. You round down, so it's seven units. And that would be, according to our codified formula, two very low, two low, and three moderate-income units. It's also important to note, and this was verified with the city attorney, that we impose, and let me go to the next slide, which has a graph, we impose the greater of the requirements by income category, but not the additive. So we're not adding density bonus units and inclusionary. We're calculating them separately, and the greater is the prevailing number. So this table that was in the staff report, we went back and forth several times about how to portray the data, and it's not meant to be additive. You can't add these together necessarily, and get the columns and rows to add up, but it's a graphic representation of how we got to the numbers that are in the staff report. So on the far-left column, the base number, again, the base number of units is 48. When you apply the density bonus, they're proposing 11% or six very low-income units. And result, what they achieve through that is a 35% increase in the density, which gets you to 65 units. So the project goes from 48 to 65. The inclusionary column, again, we're going back to that 48 base, and our third, a third and a third, we end up with two very low, two low, and three moderate-income units. And so since we can't add them together, we take the result of the density bonus. We end up on the far-right-hand column, six very low income, two low income, three moderate units. And in addition to the three moderate units that are required by inclusionary, the applicant is requesting another three units to get you to 74. So those three that the applicant is requesting would be moderate-income units, and we discussed that, and I'll explain the logic behind that. That gets you to the total of 14 low, excuse me, 14 affordable units of the various categories, or almost 19%. It's 18.9% of the total units, the 74 units, would be affordable, with 60 of those being at market rate. So we'll go into this in the project description, but the reason that staff is recommending approval, has recommended approval of these three additional units is in exchange for the widening of Santero Way, the build-out of the second park, and the build-out of the community parking area on the city-owned parcel just south of the Sonoma County Transit Parking Lot. So staff, the applicant, everyone, I think, had recognized that parking was the major issue in the neighborhood, and the applicant agreed to build out that parking, as well as make those other improvements to Santero Way. And so in exchange for that, we're recommending the additional three units. And so I hope that clarified some of the confusion in the numbers. I think it's a little hard to track it through, but we can come back to them for later discussion if you'd like. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori McNabb, and she's going to walk us through the project. Good evening. Good. So before you tonight, it's the Kattati Station Apartment Project. It's a mixed-use project with 74 multifamily units and about 5,000 square feet of commercial space. And I've given the breakdown there. There's six one-bedroom units, 41 two-bedroom units, and 27 three-bedroom units. So Vicki talked about this briefly. In 2015, this is the overview of the project that went before the Design Review Committee and the Planning Commission. It was 155 units. It was over two project sites, a little over five acres in size. It was 100% residential. And with this, they were proposing 283 parking spaces. This project was recommended for denial at both the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, because it strayed too far from the specific plan, and parking was an issue. So the project that we are reviewing tonight is smaller. It's one project site, around, it's 2.42 acres, I believe. 74 units, 5,000 square feet of commercial, ground-floor commercial. And it's in this building, and half of this building have ground-floor commercial. Along with that, this applicant is proposing to build a pocket park, that is called for in the Santero Way specific plan. And they are also proposing to build a parking lot for, used by the wider community, not for this development. And as part of this project depot way, this public street gets built, and there's also parking along this public street. I'm going to go through the project a little more. So the 74 units, they are within three buildings. One, two, three. And ground-floor commercial space here, fronting on Santero Way, and ground-floor commercial space here, fronting onto Santero Way. A really neat aspect of this project is this interior courtyard, which has fire, outdoor fire pits and barbecues, and a lot of the units access, their units from walk-ups from this interior courtyard. There is pedestrian circulation system that comes through the project that will connect this project to the developed project and park over here, and there are two kind of walk-through breezeways to the future public park over here. In the earlier project, there was bicycle parking back in these corners of the lot, and the parking area was visible from Santero Way, which is not allowed in the Santero Way specific plan. With this revised project, they're proposing these nice bike lockers and landscaping out here, so that the parking area is screened from Kent Santero Way. And, okay. This is a perspective of the project, this street view, what it would look like from this corner down there.
this corner down there. So Vicky talked about concessions and waivers. I think the best way to understand the difference between concessions and waivers are concessions, there's not a lot of discretion to approve or deny them. It's really only if there's a public health, safety, or historic resource being affected that you would not be able to approve a concession. The two concessions that they are requesting are, one, a reduction in the ground-floor commercial. In the Santerway specific plan, 30% of ground-floor must be for commercial use. They are asking to reduce that from 30% to around 5% or 5.6% to be exact. The second concession is the elimination of fenestration. Because this zone is a mixed-use zone, it was envisioned that there'd be more commercial and more windows. So because they're building so much residential, having a lot of windows doesn't make sense. So they're asking to reduce that from 50%. And then I have the numbers there, too, between 19% and 27%. And these are the waivers. So waivers are requested if the developer feels that implementing the city code would physically preclude them from building the density requested. So they're asking for nine different waivers. And when staff went through those waivers, and they're in your staff report, but of those waivers, there were three that we weren't convinced the applicant needed to propose the density that they wanted. And we asked them for more information. Why do you need these waivers? And I'm going to go through those right now. The first one was a waiver to building orientation. The Santerway specific plan wants the primary building frontage parallel to Santerway, so that you have kind of a more urban feel with buildings on the street. And then the original proposal, they were building all three buildings perpendicular to Santerway. They said they couldn't build all three buildings parallel to Santerway because they wouldn't fit on the site, and then it would create a large surface parking area that fronts on Santerway, which isn't allowed in the plan. So this is kind of where we've come. Two of the buildings are parallel to Santerway, one is perpendicular, and the parking is screened. The second waiver that they requested that we wanted more information on was the waiver to zero setback. Again, because this is viewed as more of an urban streetscape, the plan wants 70% of the building at the back of sidewalk. And the applicant has said, because they're building residential units out here, they are required to provide outdoor open space. And to provide outdoor open space, they have to push the building back to between, so it goes from zero to between four and a half to nine feet back, so that they can have their patios. And the third waiver was to the private outdoor open space, which I touched on a little bit. So in this Catati city code, you, each residential unit is required to have 150 square feet of private outdoor open space, which is a patio or balcony. Every unit in this development does have private outdoor open space, but it does not meet the 150-square-foot standard. It's between 114 square feet and 136 square feet, and a few units meet that 150. But this image shows that if the developer put 150-square-foot balcony or patio on every unit, one, it would push this building back further from the street and would pinch in on this interior courtyard, which they've tried to create for common open space for the overall development. So with these images that they've given us and more argument, staff is now, feels more comfortable with accepting all of nine waivers. So when this project went before the Design Review Committee and Planning Commission in 2015, it was denied in part because of the insufficient parking. This new project is different. And it's different because it's mixed, it has some mixed-use square footage, and that mixed-use square footage has a higher parking ratio, so there is more parking being proposed with the project. It's building, parking along depot way, and it's also building a community parking area. So the orange clouds represent the parking that the developer is constructing, that will be, that is counted towards the project. There's 138 spaces, four more than are required by the Santerway specific plan. In addition to that parking, the developer is, and staff is recommending approval, to build out that depot way connection and then build the community parking lot adjacent to the park. So in this configuration, there's a total of 198 parking spaces. Let's see. So when this project came before the Planning Commission and the Design Review Committee, neighbors from Santerway came out and said that there's still not enough parking. So the developer brought forward an idea to change all the parking from, along the public street. Public street here, public street up here. Change it all from angled parking to perpendicular parking. And by doing that, there's 17 parking spaces added. You get five more here, a little more here, and a little more here, for a total of 17 additional. And the new number, do I have the new number? Thought I had it. Quick math out there. This is a zoom-in of the difference in the two parking scenarios. The Santerway specific plan calls for angled parking. Angled parking, I think, creates a nice streetscape, and it's a public-street scenario. This is the perpendicular parking, which I think looks more like a private development and does not look like parking that is on a public street. And these are the two options in the Santerway specific plan. The Santerway specific plan has kind of these cut sheets for each of the zones. And in this zone, the mixed-use commercial, parallel parking or angled parking are the two options. And that is why, or that is how staff came to recommend approval for the angled parking. So the Design Review Committee recommended approval of the project on a 5-0 vote. They felt the design was appropriate for the Santerway specific plan. They had no issues with the concessions or waivers, and they gave us some design feedback for the park, which I'll go over. And then the Planning Commission reviewed this project. At the Planning Commission, we had the schematic of the angled versus perpendicular parking. So they recommended to the council that the council adopt the perpendicular parking on the public street. They also gave park design feedback. They felt the design was appropriate. And most importantly, they asked staff to go back and look at the numbers in relation to the affordable housing units, and that's what Vicky went over with you at the beginning. This is the project. So I'll talk a little bit about the park. This is a, the park that, there's two parks called for in this specific plan. One is out there and is built, and this is the other park. And the site plan that the applicant has submitted is very conceptual on purpose. Staff asked for it to be conceptual so that we could get feedback through the public review process as to what the city would like to see for that park. Through the Planning Commission and Steinview, we've heard that they want the park to have some visual interest with something such as art. They felt that the park should have more of a plaza feel than a park feel, and that more shade features should be incorporated. And if this, the city council would like to give feedback as to park design, staff and the applicant are open to hearing that. And the final design of the park would happen with final design review of the project. So in this park, there are, there are two constraints with the park. The orange represents a bioswale, and the blue represents sidewalks. And staff has recommended one condition requiring a sidewalk like this on the east side of the park. Let's see, does it go in there? There it goes. So if they built a sidewalk on the east side of the park, the bioswale, which is now here, would have to move in, so the park would can become a little smaller, that the space they have to plan with becomes a little smaller. But other than that, staff hasn't recommended any other changes. This project was reviewed in accordance with SEQA. Staff is recommending, or has found that this project is exempt from SEQA through a residential infill exemption. The infill exemption is a part of your packet. If you have further questions on that, we can go over it. And staff recommends that the council approve preliminary design review for the Catati Station Apartments and grant a density bonus.
And we're happy to answer any questions that you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and direct questions to staff, and then we'll address the public comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions for staff. The first one might be difficult, but I think we all have a sense that parking's been the, one of the biggest issues here. And I wanted to get a general sense of exactly, if you can tell me, what the change in ratio now with all the new units, including the park, the road that leads to the park? Perhaps a rough guess of what we went to in terms of residential unit to number of parking places before, and now if this is proven built as before us tonight, roughly how much of improvement we have per unit?
Yeah, it might take us just a minute to do the calculations.
And you could present it as a general percentage. I'm getting the sense, I'm seeing good numbers here. I just want to get a sense how that works, because I know we're kind of starting, how to describe it, perhaps in the hole, just a little bit in the neighborhood in terms of parking. So I just was, wanted to get a sense if we're truly out of it.
Okay, yeah, let us calculate that.
I'll give you a second on that one, and any information on that, I think, would be welcome from everybody here. The other thing I want to ask you, and this is a personal question, perpendicular parking in a neighborhood like this, particularly when I know the width of some of the streets is a concern. I'm sure the engineering's been done, but I just want to confirm. And this is something that is easy for people to pull in and make that sharp angled turn, because I know that an angled street is a lot easier coming from that one direction. This is something that works, and it isn't problematic for people.
Yeah, I know that our city engineer has looked at it, and he can quote you the numbers if you'd like to. While he comes up, I want to point out two things. Lori did mention that parallel parking was not one of the two options that was preferred from, by the specific plan. And one of the reasons for that was streetscape. The other reason was that the specific plan envisioned the cul-de-sac at the end acting as a traffic-calming device. And so, both the parallel parking, if you're headed south on Santerway and you're parallel parking, you have to go down to the end and turn around. The same with, more or less with angled, is that you have to go down, turn around in the cul-de-sac, and come back to enter those spaces. So it was a combination of streetscape and traffic-calming. And with the perpendicular parking, yes, people will be headed south, and if they want to park on the east side, they're just going to turn into it and turn across traffic. So that was a concern that we looked at, yes.
I would imagine if somebody's going to turn against traffic, it's most likely to occur when there's not much traffic, so hopefully it won't be as problematic as we might think. Thank you.
So just to add to Vicky's explanation, which was about the bonuses of not having to go down and come back. But just to speak actually to the dimensions of it, there would be no need to change the dimensions of that street, because an 18 feet, which is there today, or with the current plans, would be sufficient for perpendicular parking. And then the standards speak to the space you need behind there for backing up. And for perpendicular parking, it's 24 feet, and with this roadway, it allows for 26 feet. Now, the only caveat there is that when you're backing out, when people are backing out of a particular spot, it's going to be very tough to stick within that one travel lane. They're going to kind of infringe on both travel lanes. And so, the concern that I would have is that there'd be traffic-calming, traffic-slowing mechanisms put in there, so that people aren't tempted to speed through there as others are trying to back their car out of those spots.
I could picture that very easy with that design of parking. In terms of traffic-calming, what exactly would be the proposed mechanism with that in place to deal with that?
I think signage and perhaps these dots, these bots of dots on the roadway to kind of warn people as they're driving. And there could be more, you know, as, it's always an option for the city, if those are not effective, to up, to increase the measures, perhaps.
Well, it sounds like the problems might be less than I could have imagined, and it sounds like we have some solutions for some of them. And also, it sounds like in terms of space, we've got maybe 8%, a rough guess, extra in terms of what is required above what is required for this roadway width. So I think that answers that for me for now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to answer the ratio question?
If you feel so inclined, you may.
Okay. Credits to Lori, she did the calculations. With the previous application on both sets of parcels, the ratio was 1.82 parking spaces per unit. With this project, it goes to 1.86, and that is not counting the parking in the community parking area or depot way, because we weren't, although that's adding parking, we weren't necessarily thinking it would be restricted to units in this development, but available to the overall neighborhood. However, if you do count it, it goes to a ratio of 2.4 in the angled configuration and 2.6 in the perpendicular.
Good. I think we really need, I understand that the community parking probably isn't properly assessed as part of the plan, but in terms of probably how the neighborhood will really flow and how it'll be used, I think it will be to some large degree. So I'm glad to have that number, and that's a very worthwhile figure. Thank you. Sorry about putting you on the spot for coming up that calculation right away.
Just for a point of clarification on that, you said that, well, if you count the community parking, that the ratio goes to 2.8 for angled parking.
2.4. 2.4.
Oh, okay. And then 2.6 for the perpendicular.
Correct, yeah.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
All right, here we go. I guess I'm a little bit, you confused me a little bit when you put up the picture of the original project and now this project, because basically, you said that the original project was 155 units, and now we're down to 74. But correct me if I'm wrong, but we are only talking about one of the pieces of property. So in reality, it could still ultimately be way, way more than that if the same kind of scenario happens on the other lot, correct? So we're not really going from 155 down to 74.
It's, so going back several months, yes, we're not sure yet what might happen on those other parcels. The very same applications could come through. The challenge there is that the specific plan has a build-out number, and the project would, without additional fire mediation and potentially other things, fires, the one that's coming to mind, for secondary access, the project wouldn't meet that finding for public health and safety. So that was primarily why they detached that piece, because we need to explore that, or they need to explore that, and we need to understand the possibilities that might be there for the specific plan.
Do you happen to know what that, that build-out number is?
199.
199, okay, thank you. That's helpful, that's helpful.
Or maybe it's 198.
Okay, 198, some number. Okay, that's helpful. Okay. Parking spaces, I'm glad you approached that. I'm glad to see those ratios going up, because quite frankly, it was pointed out by a couple of folks, and I happen to agree based upon the kinds of people that end up renting out their end or, you know, whatever. renting out their end or, you know, whatever. Bedrooms is really a better indicator of what's going on there. And when I looked at, you know, the one bedroom, the two bedroom, you know, the three bedroom, kind of if you did it by bedroom, my rough calculations were you'd need somewhere in the neighborhood of 169 parking spaces at a minimum. I mean, that's part of the problem that's out there is, you know, they're renting to multiple people. It's not like there's a family in there with one car. So I'm glad to see that that number is going up. What was that final number? You mentioned a bunch of numbers when, when it totally got added. You said we started with 138 and then we added the other ones and you quickly kind of went by those slides.
Right, sorry. I wasn't able to read my old notes in the moment.
Okay.
So with the angled parking?
Okay.
It's 181.
181.
And if the council recommends the perpendicular, it's 198.
198, okay. So that would at least give some leeway for alleviating some of the issue that's out there because quite frankly, it, it is a problem. I agree with what was said about the perpendicular versus angled. I think that, I went out there today a, a couple of times and drove around and quite frankly, to ask people to go to the end of the cul-de-sac to turn around to get in an angled parking, you, there was two trucks there today delivering packages and I couldn't even get around the truck to get to the cul-de-sac. So I, I think perpendicular, at least a lot of the people, there was a line behind even me. If they wanted to park, they could at least pull into a parking spot and kind of get out, get out of the queue. So it also mentioned that part of what was happening was that the wi, the road was going to be widened.
Okay.
And right now there's parallel parking on both sides of the street. I'm not sure I really understand what that widening's going to look like, but I got the impression that we would take out the little bump outs so the street would be available, which definitely would, would help because that street's kind of skinny. How many spots do we lose because of that? Because there are quite a few parallel parking spots out there.
Yeah, the, the number is 11.
11, okay.
And if I could, I'd like to say a couple of things. You've brought up some really good points. The, this is largely an issue of enforcement and I realize that, that because it's in the books this way doesn't mean it functions this way. So I'm sure the members of the neighborhood can, can tell us how it actually functions. But one thing about those parking spaces in front of the park is that because of the narrowness of the street, they are restricted and there's no overnight parking in them. So, so with the improvements on the street itself, we do remove those bump outs. We get a code standard, fire code standard with access and we lose 11 daytime parking spaces.
So is it on both sides we're losing the spaces or just on one side?
Just on the park side.
Just on the park side.
Yeah. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that the applicant does have a condition of approval that they need to submit a parking management plan and they will have an onsite manager. And part of that is to help regulate how many cars per unit is, are actually on the site and creating and getting rid of any neighborhood concerns because I think the neighbors probably know better than anyone who's parking where. And so the development will have to maintain a parking management plan.
Thank you for that segue because that was where I was going next. So sort of how will the onsite manager manage that parking? Will they be given stickers and you, how, how will that work? How will they do that? And what if it's still not enough? That's what I'm worried about is will they say, okay, you, you can only have one car or you can only, you know, how, how will that work? Help me.
I think there are a variety of options that they could do and the, the applicant may have given this some thought and want to tell you where they are. I don't know that they've fully developed it yet. But they have more options being a private development than, than we have being a public agency. So they could do it by restricting cars per unit. They could do a sticker system. They could do assigned parking. They could do unbundled parking, meaning that you have to pay for your parking in addition to your unit. So there are multiple strategies out there that they might choose. Our goal, of course, when we review it at the time of final map would be that, or final approval, I should say, is that someone is accountable and that there's a system in place that's not going to exacerbate the existing problem.
So that will mean that when they do the plan, we will have to review and approve that plan before?
At a staff level, we would, yes.
Okay. And what are, what if, any are the ramifications if there's still a problem? Will that be part of the plan?
It could be, yeah. We could, it could have penalties in it. It could be that it's, we work with the municipal code for citations. It's something we'll have to look at and see what's appropriate for whatever management system they set up.
Okay, that's helpful. Trash. Now, I've been down there on trash day and it's a total nightmare. I made an assumption that because this is a multi-unit, that they are trash kind of bins and not individual trash cans. Is that correct?
That's true.
Correct, so there will be no more addition of trash cans onto that poor street?
That's true. There, there's, should I pu, pull the site plan back up? There it is. So they have trash facilities here and here. And in our conditions of approval, we've required them to check with your garbage provider here to make sure that, that the capacity and the way it's designed meets the garbage hauler's specifications and that will be reviewed at design, final design view.
Okay. All right, thank you. When I looked at the lighting plan, I didn't see any lighting in the park or the park area and I saw no lighting in the parking lot. I would be very concerned about people parking in that community parking lot and Depot Way without any lighting. I didn't know if that was an oversight or what that was, but that concerned me a lot.
That was just because of the timing of adding those two pieces of the project and we weren't sure what the park design would look like. So we did not ask them to go and develop their plans that in depth.
But there will be light.
But they will, there will be lighting, yes.
Does that make me feel better? I think I know the answer to this question, but I kind of would like to hear, what is driving the low amount of commercial space? Why is it only 5.6%?
I'll, I'll let Lori and then maybe the applicant would want to add to this as well. But basically, the residential project that, that qualifies for the density bonus, if you take that space away and apply it to commercial or make it a commercial use designation, the project just doesn't begin to pencil. The performer doesn't work and the project doesn't work.
I think lastly for right now is the park-like versus plaza-like. There was lots of different pictures of lots of different features and stuff, so it was a really a little hard to tell exactly what was envisioned. There was some fireplace-like things and some patio tables and I really couldn't get it.
So all that imagery that you're seeing in your plan?
Yeah.
Is, is the amenities planned for the common courtyard area?
Okay.
There's no imagery in the plan for the park. In the park, really, this is the only thing we have, a very conceptual plan for the park.
Okay. I, I guess one of the things that I would like to see in the park is some kind of an area for, for children, especially if we want it to be a community park, especially if we are thinking that people will come there, you know, while they're waiting for people coming and going on the train. It would be nice to have some kind of play structure like we have at, you know, La Plaza Park so that there, there is something for the children there to do. And I didn't see it there, but of course, drinking fountain, that, that's like a must for me. And that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you for all that. I will point out, because that's a good, those are helpful suggestions. And so for everyone else, if they want to add to it, I'll, I'll just say the planning commission, I, I think the committee, the design review committee really was here too and I'll let Lori correct me if I'm misrecalling, but because there is the park down the road that has the play structure and the large turf areas that are friendlier for children and this one is closer to the train, both of them were thinking, and that's where you got the park-like versus plaza language, was that it be more of a plaza-type design instead of park-like. So that was, that's what that distinction was meant for.
Yeah, and I, again, I went out there and kind of, it's a teeny, itty-bitty, one little, miniscule little play structure. It isn't what I would really call children-friendly.
Is that it?
Right now.
Okay. Councilmember Stilman? No, that's fine.
No, thank you. And I know this has been a lengthy process because I know I had been talking about it back when I was mayor. So I know that this, this has gone through a lot of iterations, but I just want to thank staff and the applicant for all of their work coordinating together and coming up with these alternate ideas. So that's great. There've been a lot of questions asked already. The only feedback I would give as far as on the park design is it'd be great if we could get some drought-tolerant plants and things like that or more native plants. But that's just a throw-out idea. But I'm, I'm glad to hear that there's more parking proposed because I know that that was really a, a difficult challenge for everybody out there right now. So I'm looking forward to hearing some more public comments and see where we are.
Councilmember Gilofsky?
Thank you. I have no questions for staff. I know that's the section we're in right now, so I'm going to let that go. I did attend the planning commission meeting, so I heard, you know, that whole discussion and the discussion from the public that was there that night. So I think that's what we need to do at this point is we've given our questions to staff and it's really to hear from the public and then I'll come back with other issues I want to bring up. So thanks.
Thank you. And the only question I have for staff at this point was, we talked about the concessions on the commercial space on that project from 30% down to 5% and the performer doesn't work and doesn't pencil out. Can you elaborate on that?
I, I think the applicant is probably better suited to it, but we, we tried to, I think both parties tried to get to a number that was higher than, than the 5% that was, that were certainly higher than zero. We started at zero. And the, back in 2015, when the project came forward before the applicant had submitted a, a market study essentially that showed there just wasn't a market for, certainly not office space in the Roanoke Park Catati Market and retail, it was a little harder to, to gauge that because the train hadn't started and there wasn't a lot of data. So the city commissioned a peer review of that study and it came to the same conclusion that there just isn't a need in the foreseeable future, I believe the projection went out 10 years, for office space to be built out. There is a huge number of, there's a huge square footage of office space currently, a glut, if you will. And so we shifted from what is mixed-use office in the specific plan to, okay, well then what kind of retail might work in this location here, a little bit back from the train and from East Catati Avenue. And where we ended up was the, the number that seemed, that, that translates to the 5.6% and that is comprised of a gym that is for residents as well as it'll be open to the general public. Part of that is the leasing office for the development itself. And then there's another speculative office that is not yet tenanted and I think that square footage is around 1,500 or 1,800 square feet. So that was through the negotiations, assuming that the market studies are correct, that was a number that we felt we could ease into it with, with understanding that we still have the parcel that's right up on East Catati where we'd really like to focus retail development and try with this project to see how well that office space will tenant and stay tenanted.
So of the proposed 5,000 square feet, 1,800 is for proposed gym for the residents?
I'm going to have Lori verify those numbers.
So that, that really diminishes that commercial opportunity even greater because you've got the leasing office of the development, if I understand that correctly, and a gymnasium for the residents to use. That was my question on that. And now what I'll do is I will open it up for public comment on this particular item and then if we have any comment of the proponents of this project, we can go ahead and go from there. So with that, I'll go to public comment. Ms. Holdman?
I have been in support of the Santero Way project for over two years now. I would like to say they've done everything you have asked them. They have jumped through every hoop, including they have gone overboard in doing what your monies and your bad management did. There was from 2006, you had park and loop funds from the Santero Way Park and I last year especially said, why are you spending those park and loop funds over on Valetti Park across the way? All the development fees were used for the downtown, not near Santero Way. And now you're punishing them by making them go and make, take your public property and make it into a parking lot. You're making them put into a park. Where did all those monies go that were left there that they paid already to you guys? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address public comment on this issue?
My name's Helen Bradley. I'm a resident of Santero Way. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but thank you very much for looking at the parking. Parking is critical there. I really do encourage you to go the perpendicular parking to try and get extra car parking spaces there. People are already parking on the park. The situation there is extremely dire and it's not going to get better anytime soon. So whatever you can do to alleviate the parking situation, particularly since you're increasing the density here and we're getting a lot of extra bedrooms and it's really bedrooms that count. You're dead right on that bedroom thing. You know, if you get two students in one bedroom, you're already looking at the potential of six people, six cars in a single three-bedroom unit. It's happening already on Santero Way. You have a look at the buildings that are already there that have got anywhere between six and eight, if not more, students in a single four-bedroom townhouse. And that's just, and the reality is that they all have cars. They don't ride pushbikes. The train doesn't go anywhere right now. It doesn't go to the supermarket. You have to have a car, even if you have a train station there, because you can't get to general facilities without a vehicle. So please be pragmatic about it. The situation's bad and it's not, I don't see that it's going to get any better with this. It just might get a whole, whole worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sky Matula. I live at 6305 Santero Way. In the effort of saving time, I'll just read this real quick. First of all, I like most of the design. We are only looking at about half of the development plan. They've just taken one lot, and so that's what we're looking at. So we should be considering double this in the future and thinking about that for our parking plan. I would like to see something more like the 48 units that it's supposed to have, rather than the 74 proposed. I'm curious to know what is considered low income, what is considered very low income, and how that's gonna be monitored moving forward when this development is being leased by their leasing office. We just touched on this, but what will the commercial space actually be? I've heard that it's a gym for residents and open to the public. Is that, you know, at a fee for others? And then the leasing office for the apartment complex, is that considered commercial space in other apartment complexes? This certainly doesn't seem like mixed-use to me. It just seems like part of an apartment complex. As far as for the design review to look at moving forward, I mentioned this at the planning and wasn't able to go to the first design review. I'd really like to see the roof lines have gable roof looks. I know they want to have a flat roof behind a parapet, and that's understandable for AC units up there. I think that the straight wall with corbels looks too urban and commercial. Looks more like office buildings rather than residential. And because of time, perpendicular would be much better. I'd like to do that. 1.86 parking spaces per unit, ridiculous. 2.6 is better, but that's taking into account all the parking. And we already need at least 50 spots with what is already existing. Just at that end of the street, we're taking away all the parking on the park side, which is only, which is only enforced sometimes on occasion. And so oftentimes is nighttime parking. We need another 50 spots down at the other end. So looking at bedrooms is definitely much more realistic. And the traffic dots was mentioned. I know that some of our residents would like to see speed humps. Traffic dots are very loud, and my time is up. So I'd like to see the lights in, the light posts in the train station have some things over them, because it's night vision pollution in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parich?
I feel so bad for the residents out there, Santero Way. I remember them coming before. I remember the developer coming before the council years ago for the first phase. I remember how the city council wrestled with the fact that the council really wanted the commercial portion of this project to go first. And they did not want all this residential put in first, for fear that the commercial would not get built out. There were so many concerns. Paul Fody and some of the other locals here had argued that the street itself was not sound. There was not enough base rock on that street to support the amount of traffic. There were so many problems out there to begin with. And now we come to this part of the project, and, I mean, it's pretty clear that the proposed project is far too dense. Far too dense. For the 48 units, it's probably more reasonable. The, I think the council bent over backwards for the developer the first time out. That was before the housing crash. A lot of people, a lot of residents out there were very disappointed in their investment in that project and the living conditions and the parking conditions out there. I see this proposed project as being a bigger nightmare going forward. I can't see how it's gotten this far. Plus the fact that these parking spots are getting smaller. If you look at our plans, our zoning, we're making these parking stalls smaller. They're even more difficult for a lot of these vehicles. You're gonna have to start using golf carts to live out in these areas. They're so small. So this thing needs to go back to the original 48 units. If it's ever gonna be feasible, if these other people are ever gonna see any kind of return on their investment for buying a home out there, if it's gonna be any kind of livable or sustainable out there, this is, this is just out of control where this plan is going.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this?
Hi, I'm Kristin Arntz, and I'm a homeowner on Santero Way. And I got up and spoke last meeting about the parking situation. It's already so bad, even in the daytime. I'm holding my wheel as I go down the road, hoping, you know, because the road is so narrow and there's already so many cars parked on that road. And another concern that you guys brought up in here that I guess I didn't hear at the planning meeting was that you're gonna, I heard that you're gonna widen the road. But, I mean, are you gonna widen the road, like, up to my door? Up to my, like, porch or something? Or take out the sidewalks that are already, like, there on Santero Way? And I'm, I mean, I don't know how you guys are gonna widen the road. And it seems absurd with all the, you know, we have the trashcans out there. You know, as a homeowner, I feel not, not very happy with, you know, the Colvin Group as developing those homes. I mean, I've been personally, you know, underwater in those units already since, you know, I bought them. And, I mean, this project is just gonna devalue Santero Way even more. And I am not, I'm not, I just don't think that it should go through. And I agree with the man that just spoke about. I don't, I even have, like, some really bad plumbing issues right now, and I think it has something to do with the sewer system, and I'm getting it looked into. I don't even know if, like, the sewer system in the city or on that road could even support that many more bodies. So I wanted to bring that up too. And that's, that's my, what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address this, public comment on this item? Okay, seen none. I will bring it back to the council. We have any further questions of the developers on this? Can you address some of those questions that came up?
Do you want us to read?
Yes, we can address a couple of them, and I'm gonna have City Engineer Craig Scott address the widening issue and the sewer issue, of course. I think the short answer is no, the road will not be widened in front of any of the existing units. But Craig can give us the detail on that. So I'll let him go first, and then we can come back to the other question.
Okay, so the two issues, the widening and then the sewer capacity. The widening is only on the development side, and that is happening with the property providing an adequate right-of-way on the east side of the road for the parking, for this 12-foot sidewalk. And then as it gets in front of the park, that's why the 11 spaces are given up there. It's because there's bulbous there that'll be removed. And with the elimination of those 11 parking spots, that'll create that seven or eight feet extra space. So that's how the widening is going to be achieved. And then with the sewer, we did have the applicant put together a, conduct a sewer study, capacity analysis. And resulting from that, we had a six-inch existing sewer main that's in Santero Way. The applicant's going to be responsible for upsizing that to an eight-inch sewer, which goes all the way to East Cotati Avenue, where it connects to a major trunk sewer, where there's no, where there's plenty of sewer capacity at that location.
Is that the 18-inch line that I looked at in the plans? Or is that, was my number off on that?
Yeah, the 18-inch would not be in Santero Way. It's right there at Cotati Avenue, right? So, and so we evaluated it, and we feel comfortable at the engineering department here with that increased sewer capacity.
Okay, thank you.
On some of the other issues that were raised by the public, Mr. Matula, I know, brought this up before, and quite honestly, I agree with him that I like the gable roof design. The challenge is when you are processing the density bonus request, that results in buildings that are taller with larger mass. And when you try putting gabled roofs on them, it just doesn't work. The gabled roofs are meant for smaller, you know, two-story at the most kind of structures. And when you put them on the taller structures, you end up with a huge roof apparatus or a huge roofing structure that just starts to overwhelm everything, and then the buildings get taller because of that. So they end up extremely tall, and all you see really are roof, is roof. So when you start to get to this height and mass, I think the flat roofs are actually a little friendlier than many of the other options. And he mentioned, Mr. Matula also mentioned the 50 spaces. And that was, we had heard that number before, and I think in the, in the parking study that was actually done for the project. That's, that also came to the conclusion of 50. So that was what was getting us to the build-out of the city lot, which incidentally can only be used for parking. The city-owned lot can only be used for parking. With the addition of those along Depot Way and that community parking area, we get a total of 43 additional spaces in the angled scenario and 48 with a perpendicular scenario. So I had, we had heard that 50 before, and that was really the number we were shooting for. Unfortunately, there's not much that I can say about Ms. Arntz's concerns about devaluation of the properties. I, I understand the concern. And perhaps the applicant might want to address that as well. And I believe those were the majority of the questions, unless I missed something.
There was a question regarding what constitutes low and what constitutes very low?
Oh, okay.
As far as affordability or?
Okay, yes, thank you, I missed that. Very low is below 50% of the area median income, which is set by the state by county. And so for Sonoma County, the area median for a family of four in 2016 is $82,600. So very low income would be households earning less than 50% of that, or $41,000. Low income is 51% to 80% of that number. And moderate is 80% to 120% of area median.
It's all based on area median?
It is, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Gym fee, what about the gym?
Oh. There's a question regarding a gym? Fee, membership?
Oh, yes, thank you. I don't know if there will be a reduced fee for either the public or the residents. I don't know what that fee structure would look like. But yes, the gym will be open to the public.
And what about the speed humps? There was a question about the noise.
Speed bumps and speed humps, we would have to review with the fire district. There is a response time issue there that generally police and fire are concerned about. We, they are allowed in instances with, by our local code, they are, can be allowed. So if we wanted to look at that as an option, we just have to consult with public safety.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I have some questions for the applicants, if they would kindly come up. I don't know if council has questions. Okay.
Hi, I'm Neil Rudolph. I represent the applicant.
Hi, Neil. And you are the architect on this?
No, I'm just the banker.
Okay. Sorry to hear that.
It is problematic. No, I'm, the partnership is made up of an architect, Guy Chambers is sitting right over here, a sort of land development person, who's Larry Coleman, who I suspect is watching on TV. We also have 29 investors from all over the country. So we have been at this for about 15 or 16 years now. We're actually very proud of the project. The landscaping design have won awards. We've tried in many ways to come up with a new project, this project, the apartment project, which responds to the city's needs in the marketplace and to the city's requirements for the area. One thing that was mentioned that I did want to touch on was the width of the street. When the original 70-pound homes were put in there, which was done between 2004, '34 through 2006, our proposal was for a wider street. The staff asked us to tighten the street as a traffic calming mechanism. So we are more than happy to widen the street by taking that parking out and cleaning up that sidewalk. And for this project, the street will be wider, because it's raw land. So we're in the position to be able to place the sidewalks and widen the street. So we are very, very aware of that issue, and we intend to deal with that directly. With respect to the parking, this has been really an eye-opener for us from the perspective of doing the parking studies, working with the city, and coming up with the best solution we could come up with. It required two elements. One was purchasing the park, which we went into the marketplace and purchased, and designing parking along the new little triangular park there. Obviously, committing to building Depot Way and putting parking there, and then meeting with the city and determining that parking was such an issue that we would be supportive of building the city parking lot, the 32 spaces, if I remember correctly. So we feel we've, we've done what we can do. There are many other things that can be done, and they would include the following. The city, excuse me, the apartment leasing office will have a resident manager. The resident manager will have a parking management plan, as Vicki touched on. That parking management plan has not been fully fleshed out, because we need to know more before we commit to something. But the promises we can make is, are, it's an apartment. The partnership will own the apartment. We've heard that there's a parking issue. And the idea of limiting the number of cars that get, that are allowed in the area based on bedrooms makes a lot of sense to us. So we're trying not to add to the parking issue. And we will put in place management to ensure we address that on a daily basis. And the resident, it will be a resident manager. They will live there. They will hear it every day. Second, much of the parking issue on Santero Way is driven by, as pointed out, folks leasing the apartments that are going to the university. That was not necessarily what we envisioned when it was built. We envisioned it as a family area. And of course, with students living there, and others, obviously, there are many, many garages that don't have cars in them. The parking study made that extremely clear to us. And we'd love to be able to say, okay, we still own the 70 townhouses, the two apartment buildings and the 14 lofts, and we can somehow impose stickers and/or enforcement to have people use their garages. We can't do that, we don't own it, they're all owned by individuals, obviously. But much of the parking issue is driven by garage- But much of the parking issue is driven by garages filled with stuff. And garages tend to be filled with stuff when, as has been pointed out by the public, there's lots of people living there rather than just two, four, whatever the units were originally designed for. I'd love to say that we can fix it. We, we've been on the homeowners association the whole, whole time, we've tried to address it, but we have not been able to fix it. We're very aware of the issue. With respect to the density bonus and the concept of the size of the project, the density bonus is very much driven by the state's desire for more affordable housing. And I think we can all agree, more affordable housing is not a bad thing, but it does get you into the math of what's the right number of units. It also gets you into walking the tightrope of, well, what's the right number of residential units and as council and the planning commission and the design review commission pointed out, what's the right number of commercial units? That's where the banking part comes in. There is zero market for renting office space on that part of Santero Way, in this part of Sonoma County, with Sonoma Mountain Village having hundreds of thousands of square feet empty, of literally identical kinds of, of office structures. So we're caught in a game of walking a tightrope of what is financially viable. In the density bonus law, it speaks to the fact that we have to come up with a plan that supports the affordable housing in advance of commercial. Because obviously, every unit of affordable housing at the very low and low level is being rented out well below market. Then we turn and say, well, how much commercial can we have that may not be rented out at all? And that's where Vicky pointed out, I'm the one who said, I can sharpen this pencil ten times, I can't get there and I can't get a finance. And if I can't get a finance, I can't get a build. So that, I think, were all the items that I heard that I thought I should immediately address. I am more than happy to answer any other questions or have anyone else from our team come up and answer questions. We also have Dave Brown, the engineer, our engineer here, who's worked with Craig on coming up with the correct calculations with respect to the sewers, the power, et cetera. Oh, Susan Harvey mentioned lighting. There'll be lighting, I promise.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a non-issue, it just doesn't show up in these plans, but we're, all of us know what it's like to park in a dark spot or walk through a dark park. That's not going to happen here.
Thank you.
So before I forget, there's one quick question. The sewer line is going to be increased from six inches to eight inches or four, six to eight inches. So that's a twenty-five percent increase roughly for that capacity. And yet the number of units are going to go from seventy to an additional, they're going to double the capacity, but we're only going to increase the sewage capacity by twenty-five percent?
It's not exactly doubling the capacity, if you're counting units.
Units.
Right now, there's over a hundred units out there.
Okay.
That, in the Santero Way, that-
Okay. And then that's not even counting the future development that's going to be down there?
That is correct. So, so it's really an engineer's question. If they tell us to put in an eight-inch pipe, we're going to put in an eight-inch pipe. If they tell us to put in a ten-inch pipe, we'll put in a ten-inch pipe. We're not-
That's not a big deal.
The cost of digging, the cost of digging up the street is the cost.
Okay.
The labor of putting in the pipe is the next big, big cost. The width of the pipe and the purchase of the size of the width of the pipe-
Not significant.
We're pretty indifferent to that.
I just wanted to get a clarification on that.
No, and I appreciate that.
Just to interject quickly, the, the capacity goes up by the square of the diameter, so it's not twenty-five percent, it's more like-
Forty or something like that.
Even, even, right, fifty percent or more of the capacity.
Well, I just know that in this town, we need a lot of sewage capacity.
But, does that work for the other lot too?
Well, and that's the thing, that's going to take into consideration another development that may eventually be developed on the road, in your estimation, Mr. Scott?
So eight-inch will cover not only this, but also any future development on the lot? We're not going to be digging up this road and asking them to put in a-
Would really rather pick it up once.
Well, that's kind of why we're asking.
Okay, well, and these are things of, that I, it's much like, like Ms. Harvey indicated, you don't want to come back down the road and go, oh, we missed that. And for years, that was an issue with some of the things that had occurred in Pottamam, I mean, in Contati, was, you know, I would ask a question of the planning directors previously and their, their response was always, oh, we missed that. So I, I want to make sure that when we're looking at these things, we don't miss those.
And I was speaking to, to that earlier, Mayor Moore, in that we felt the road should be wider, now we're going to widen it. If we had built it the original width back in oh-three, we probably wouldn't be talking about that right now.
Right.
So you're right, let's get it right up front.
Okay. Councilmember Delo, so you have some questions?
Comments and questions, so-
Sure enough.
You can catch your breath, we take a sip of water, whatever it takes. I do want to say, I think it's been kind of, it's gone unnoticed so far tonight, is, you know, that the applicants, along with staff and public input, have made significant changes, in my opinion, to what was first brought to the city a couple, several years ago. And yes, this has been going on for a long time, so thanks for the patience, but I think in looking at this design strategically, which is what's been done, I think that's the right thing. I know it's taken a while, but we're all in agreement that we want to do this as right as we can. Is it going to be perfect for everybody out there? Absolutely not. There's going to be issues with, you know, some level of parking and, and I don't want, I don't want to forget speeding. Speeding is, in my opinion, every time I've been over there, a pretty darn major issue. And even at the point, I was there for a half an hour a couple of weekends ago, where I stood there and actually waved to people that were speeding by me, they had to be doing thirty-five plus miles an hour. And even if that were the speed limit there, which it's not, and you have all the cars on the side of the road and the narrow road, it's out of hand. So, you know, that's something that the city will do their best to follow up on through the police department. And there was an officer driving through and ticketing those that were parked in an inappropriate way. So that does go on, which is good to see. But, but I, I want to bring the point out that there's been significant changes, you know, you have listened to what the city, with the commissions and what the public is looking for in change. And so thank you for that much, I just wanted to throw that out there. Don't, I don't want to let go of that speeding. Somebody had brought up the possibility of like bot dots. And I would throw caution to the wind on that because for anybody who's living at that house right by the dots, it's going to be a really annoying sound twenty-four-seven. So I don't think that's a great solution. I'm not going to tell you that I think speed bumps are good or bad because there's two people in this world, they either like them or they don't, and I don't want to take sides on speed bumps tonight. So traffic calming measures of some kind, you know, and if it means, if it means ticketing people who are speeding, maybe that's a really good learning lesson for them. I also wanted to compliment you on the tentative plant palette that you guys have put together here because not only are there some native plants, which is great, but the drought tolerant stuff, I think that's a big deal. When I hear about an art feature or a water feature in the park, you know, if the water feature was a recycled water feature, I guess I'd be okay with it. But I mean, in these days, where every drop of water in this state is turning into liquid gold, I think we have to be pretty judicious about what we do with water. So the drought tolerant plants that, when I look at this, it's like ninety-five percent of the species of plants you guys have selected, from shrubs and grasses to trees, and I think that's great. So, not, I'm not quite ready to give comments on the park. I know, I don't know, Vicky, if you were looking for that tonight, but, you know, I, I want some more time to kind of mull it over or, or maybe just let it go through design review and will that go through planning as well?
Yes, they would submit more detailed plans and then it would go just to design review at that point. So we do a staff review of the plans and then it goes on to the design review committee.
Yeah, I think the only comment I have at this point is I think a passive approach is still a very appropriate approach to that space, but I'll just kind of leave, that's, how broad is that, right? Passive, there, I'm done, for tonight, anyway. So, and I, and I think the perpendicular parking, I mean, I heard the discussions at the planning commission meeting, it made perfect sense, everybody in the room was doing this and it seems like, you know, why would we not go that route? I mean, we need to do everything we can down there because I will freely admit that there were some unintended consequences that people didn't see back in the day, namely parking. And I wasn't on the council then, although I've been on the council for a long time. I'll still take the blame for it, at being a city official today, but I think let's do the best we can to get it as right as we can. It's not going to be a perfect system, but let's, let's just make sure we're doing as right as we can. You know, we've heard from the citizens, parking, I'm shocked, nobody said speeding, but I've brought it up three times now in about two minutes, so I think that's enough, I think my point's, point's been made. And we really need to see what we can do with that. So again, you can comment on anything I said or you can ignore me and move on, but thank you for what you guys have done up to this point.
Well, I think Councilmember Delo, so I'd like to comment on two things specifically. One is the landscape, architect, landscape people that we have on the team, they're the ones who should be given the kudos, they've done an outstanding job. The work they did, by the way, in the little parks inside the townhouses, that's won awards. People like that, not just people who give awards of, but if you go by there like during the week, you'll see people sitting in those little parks and enjoying what we planted and we intend to continue at that level or greater on this project. With respect to our, our working with staff and coming up with a better project, yes, that, that's pretty simple. We heard loud and clear in design review and planning commission in fifteen that what we were proposing was not correct to the concept of the Santero Way specific plan, not what the neighborhood was looking to see, but also coming from our perspective, we did want to see apartments next to a train station. So we started there and we went back to the city manager, the city planning director, and we started all, in essence, we started all over. And it has been a very, very positive experience, one with a lot of give and take, one with a lot of direct and honest communication about what will work, what won't work, what you folks need to do, what we folks need from you, what we need from the city. And it has come up with a much better project and I appreciate the comments, thank you very much.
Yes, I, I mean, I appreciate all the work. I know it has been a very long, long and painful at times process.
It wasn't as painful as people seemed to think.
Yeah, well, that's good.
Because Guy and I lost our day jobs, so we had more time for this.
Oh, well, there you go. There you go. You know, I think everybody, when they sit down and they work together, I think you ultimately end up with, with a better project. And I, I liked, you know, even hearing, you know, where you brought in different examples of things and once you brought in an example, then staff could see what you were talking about. And it's those kind of things that help get the conversation going-
Yeah, that's-
-so that people can understand. Because, you know, sometimes looking at these flat pieces of paper, it, it's sort of difficult to, to kind of conceptualize. I did have to go out there a couple of times because I need to kind of like-
Yeah.
-you know, get the lay of the land and, and see how some of that goes. So I'm really happy about that. I agree with you that apartments belong out, out there by the train station, I think it's appropriate. I also agree with you that, you know, we are in need of affordable housing, so I am glad that, that you're working with us towards that. When I kind of look at this little table, you know, that you kind of put together, I guess the, the only wish that I would have had, and, and I don't know why it came out this way, but, but it did, but where the additional units were there, I guess I would have wished that those would have gotten spread out and not all be in the moderate income. I think I know the answer to that based upon, you know, your pencil being out there, but-
Well, I will, I will tell you that, that there was a significant amount of torturing of the spreadsheets, walking Vicky Parker, the director of community development, and Lori McNabb through it. And we have done something though that perhaps is not obvious in that chart. We then make sure that all the affordables are balanced on one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom. So the, the affordables add up to, for argument's sake, nineteen percent of the total project. So they are nine, as close as we can make it within the three percent error rate, seeing as we're near an election, everyone talks about three percent error rate. So we're between sixteen and twenty-one percent, twenty-two percent in one bedroom, three bedroom, excuse me, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, broken down by very low, low and moderate. So we try to ensure that it is not a project where, quote, "all the affordables are jammed into the one bedrooms."
Mm-hmm.
Because we see that and we did not do that.
And I, I appreciate that. The other thing that I'm looking forward to is, again, parking is, as you've stated, is a big problem. So I'm happy that there will be a parking management plan, I'm happy that there will be someone there on a daily basis to have to listen to that and that, you know, they will be there to address those concerns. I'm happy that there'll be an onsite manager, period.
Yeah.
Because I think that oftentimes, that's a problem in, in apartment houses, is, you know, it's, it's like somebody owns something and they're often, you know, God knows where, so that there's someone there for people to go to. And be that people that live in the apartment building or people in the neighborhood because they're having a problem with something in the apartment building. I think that that is a very wise, a wise choice that was made. But all in all, you know, I really appreciate all the work that's done and I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're finally to this point.
Susan, so are we.
Maybe at some point we'll get a vote.
Well, you have to wait for all those politicians to stop talking, so I, I hope we all have plenty of time. So with that, I'm going to try and do mine all at once, get it all together. I'm going to start with a quick punch list item for you, Neil, if I could, this is not a big question, it's an easy one. But it was actually a comment made from the public concerning light pollution, that can occur when you do do the lighting plan for the park. And I'm sure your team probably already has this figured, but if you could make sure you put some attention to not only finding that balance between good lighting for the people using the park and the walkways, but also making sure the people that live there don't have light coming in the bedroom windows all night. Because that happens sometimes, I live with that too and it's a problem. So with that, yeah, exactly, unintended consequences that we don't want, so-
We had exactly that problem in my own neighborhood in Marin County, where they installed this super new, high-intensity lights.
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic when you walk up the streets.
We have heard that too, yes.
But the poor house across the street is like, their living rooms lit up whether they want-
And yet the complaint years ago, where the old was, it's sodium vapor lights, not bright enough, so-
They couldn't walk down the street.
Were always working.
Right.
So I'm going to begin my comments by saying, I agree, one of my colleagues on the planning commission chose not to support this project, not so much, I believe, from, from what I've heard, as a reflection on the quality of the project or the work that's gone into it to, at this final result, but more a frustration with the density bonus process. And I've heard that from the community a little bit as well and I will have to admit, I personally share that somewhat. I would have to agree with you, there, there's no question there's value in making sure that there's adequate to lower-cost housing. And private, private industry, private enterprise doesn't lead itself normally to do that, so this is the place government has to perhaps apply that leverage and make that happen. Nevertheless, it is frustrating for us as a community when we're trying to make sure we're being responsive to the needs of neighbors who have invested in neighbors, invested long-term in property. So it makes it difficult. Having said that, I noticed that perhaps we're not happy with the density bonus, perhaps the neighbors might not be happy with, oh, the bot dots, you name it, whatever, any number of things. I know you as developers probably weren't happy to rework this project, to have to add parks, parking, more parking spaces, to significantly improve the already high level of architecture fit and finish you had at our staff's work. So I come to the conclusion that everybody's unhappy with this, which means we all did our job right.
That's great, and in all negotiations, everyone should leave equally unhappy.
There, you know, there's some truth to that. I mean, this is the way it's supposed to work.
Yes, my, my wife and I, still on that program.
When we come to a place where I don't have to feel the need to try and twist your arm, if I could put it so delicately, to ask for other things that I think are missing, that tells me that our staff and you folks have spent your time, and of course, we've all been in contact through this process, as we should be. But you've done the work, so we don't have to do it here. You've come to a good conclusion and that's what you want to see. You want to see that from the staff and the community and that's the type of partners you want to work with in the community. So I think that's an improvement for both of us. If we look at some of the dealings we've had in the past in various iterations, we're doing a lot better and I think that's just great. So there's that. You know, when I came to you, when we've talked, because you asked for our opinions and wanted to share yours, I think I gave you about four main things. and wanted to share yours, I think I gave you about four main things that I saw as concerns. You're smiling because you know what the main one was. We'll just hit it, parking.
Yes.
I think I said that three times to you.
You did, sir.
Okay. And that was an easy one because I'd heard it, because I was fortunate enough that other people had shared it with me. I wanted to, if possible, see a fix for, that what struck me as a ludicrous solution for Santero, the parking during the day but not at night. I felt that was something where perhaps, I don't care who you blame, whether it's the city, the developer, the fire district, all of us probably share some culpability. We shouldn't have come to that. And it's, sometimes it's unintended consequences, but we learned from that, and I'm really happy to see a small fix for that because I think it's important. I told you I wanted to see public parks, spaces, something nice architecturally, perhaps some art. Because this is an important part of town, and you told me you recognized that, so I wanted to see that. I see that and made that to the final plan. That's a good thing. And lastly, probably even more important than parking, I told you the concern was for folks who had invested in this neighborhood, which we all agreed initially was supposed to be a family neighborhood, and through forces outside all of our control, has subtly shifted. I want to make sure that what you built matched the quality of what they had there. Because frankly, your initial build there is beautiful. That is a very nice neighborhood. Anybody who, I'm sure there's issues, we have them in all neighborhoods, but that is a very nice place, and I wanted to make sure we maintain that. And I don't know if we've got, everybody's got exactly what they wanted, but we've came as close as we can get in this particular iteration, and I'm appreciative of that very much. Some comments about the park. I would agree, I see the public gathering is hitting place, a plaza, not a recreation zone generally. That's my first take, looking at the size and the location. I agree, I would like to see a nice piece of art, something big, notable, so it can be seen from the road. Because remember, we all agree, this is an important part of town, and it's going to be seen by a lot of travelers. I will agree with my colleague, if we get a water feature, it should be recyclable. Make sure I do that, so I don't get in trouble. But that is, those are the directions I'd like to see come forward. That would be a big sign of support for me. As far as the question of speed bumps, that's actually something I think the community can help with. If you really want that, I, I would say to my friend, Mr. Matula, get everybody in your neighborhood to sign on and show up to us in the fire district. Because that's what it takes. Because we see this so often in a neighborhood of 15 streets. Seven people will say we want them, and then seven or eight will say, no, we don't. You come with most people doing it. And I think, much like you are agnostic and pipes, we're somewhat agnostic in what we put down, if it works best for a neighborhood and has no issues for all our partners, including the district, if we can make that work, that'd be a good thing. So I'm going to finish this by saying, I'm going to support this. I, I think the work's been done. A year ago, I might not have supported this project, but what you've done since then has made this, I think, the best we could ask for. We've got a lot of improvements. I just want to do say, though, I think that as we go to the second half, potentially in the future for this project, I think I get, I want to give you my clear take at this time, that I think further improvements in parking will obviously be required there. I think just iterating this same development, these same proportions there, might not fly.
We would agree with that.
Good, good. I wanted to get that out there and just make that clear. Because we have issues of waivers, we have issues of various things, and that would be the place I think I would have less flexibility. Because at that density then, I think the fixes we put in place might start to fall apart, and I think it needs stronger medicine. So with that's all I have for you, other than a thanks to you and all your staff, and all my staff. Very nice job to all of you on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think there has been a lot already put forward, so that's one of the benefits of going last.
Old Contrare?
Oh, that's right. Okay, second to last, sorry. But, and I, I do hear the concerns that people are saying about the density issues. However, unfortunately rewriting the government code is kind of outside of our purview. But making the most of what the numbers do end us up with, I, I think there's been a lot of compromise and leeway. And so I really appreciate all of the back and forth between what we're looking for, what the staff is looking for, what you guys are needing to have a viable, sellable units, obviously. So, so thank you for that. And if we could rewrite the government code, perhaps we would, but not something we can do here tonight, unfortunately. So thank you very much for all of your work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tell me a little bit about the performance that doesn't seem to work on the commercial space versus residential. Enlighten me on that. Just pretend like I know nothing.
Okay. Well, honestly, Mayor Moore, I, I knew nothing when we hired Professor Eiler from Sonoma State University, the head of the economics department, to walk us through it. I had never spent enough time up here to really understand it. He drove us over to Sonoma Mountain Village and walked us through hundreds of thousands of square empty feet, built, not rented. He then walked us across the street to all that's been planned, with all the pipe in the ground, all the parking built, and pointed out that that would go up the minute the buildings that are already up started to rent. Then he drove us over to Roanoke Park, another part of Roanoke Park where the old, and I'm sure I'm going to get the insurance company name wrong, Allstate?
State Farm.
State Farm. Okay. I use Allstate, somebody else, State Farm, right. And said, all of this is sooner or later got, we have to get absorbed. And Vicky touched on this in her presentation, when you added all that up, you were at 10 years' worth of absorption, using the present economic growth rates. So that sort of opened our eyes to the fact that building a line, for argument's sake, 10 or 15 commercial spaces for people like insurance agents, dentists, lawyers, God forbid, accountants, which is how I started in the game, all of that just wouldn't rent, not at that location. We have spent quite a bit of time in the 2007 timeframe, coming up with a plan for the retail site that would be next to the present train station. So we, as developers, wanted to buy that site from the city, and we put together a plan for commercial right there on the corner, be, in essence, right across from where the Chevron station is on the other side of Santero Way. We developed that, we wanted to buy the property, and the deal fell through with the, maybe two previous staffs ago, and several previous iterations of our firm. So, but we think that is very, very viable for commercial development right on Santero Way. As you get farther back, it's a little harder to make work. For instance, how do you get the signage correct to pull people down Santero Way to go to their dentist, or doctor, or insurance agent, or accountant, or lawyer? It's problematic. So we came to the conclusion that we would have to sit on the space for a long, long time. We might be able to rent it out. So then we started working on, well, what could it be? Quite obviously, one unit, it's in essence, four apartments. And if you think about blocks, right, it's in essence, four block, four pieces of, so there's 74 apartments, there's four commercial spaces. When you add up all the quote units, there's 78 units. So one would be assigned to the leasing office, which would have, as I pointed out, a full-time person there who would live on the site. Then another would be assigned to the gym for the residents of the apartments, but it would be available to everybody in the neighborhood, and that would be a quote, "commercial activity." The other two units, very honestly, we don't know what they are yet. We just know that there's about 2,400, 2,600 square feet that we're going to have to rent out as either two units or one large unit. And it, it can be demised in a number of ways. But we don't know what naturally would go in there. But we do know we would be marketing against hundreds of thousands of square feet at Sonoma Mountain Village.
I'm having a difficult time analogizing that particular area with Sonoma Mountain Village. Sonoma Mountain Village was built as Hewlett Packard back in the 80s. That was never envisioned to be a market place when that was built. Granted, there's an issue with commercial space at this point in time. I don't see anything in this plan talking about live-work units that are part of the, of the Santero Way specific plan at all.
Right, right.
None, not a one.
We built 14 quote, "live-work lofts," and, and just before the, the crash of 07-08, we could never sell them or rent them out as live-work lofts. They, they had to, in essence, be repackaged as apartments and quote condos slash apartments.
And where was that?
It's right behind the park, the present park we built in 2006, sir. Those are 14 live-work lofts, absolutely defined by the Santero Way specific plan, with concrete floors, loft sleeping areas, designed for programmers or people that are going to build a bear.
And you've converted them to...
We didn't, we, we didn't have a choice. We couldn't sell them because of the 07-08 crash. So we turned them into apartments, and we ran them as apartments until 2015, at which time we sold them to an actual apartment operator.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The, if you look, I went back and I looked at this project, and I looked at all the varying iterations that have come before the planning and design review, and even at one point, council. And the, the, one of the biggest things that stands out in my mind is, if you look at that design, and I know that you look at this as, what's the maximum density we can get away with and, and make the most money we can make on a development project? I get that. I get that. That's the purpose of what you do for a living. When the project is all done, whatever project it is, you are not necessarily living in that neighborhood. So you don't necessarily see some of the ramifications of that, the consequences of that. I look at this project, and to me, it, it doesn't fit within the specific plan where it says, create a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood that is compatible with and complements the existing small-town character of the city of Cattani. This looks like HUD housing. It looks like HUD housing. There's, there's no architectural copolas on there, there's, there's not, there's a flat roof line. You talk about that little courtyard in the middle of that. I don't see the pedestrian walkway of people that may be coming up to the railroad depot and saying, oh, I'm going to walk into that little community complex over there, enjoy that little park with the fire pits and the lighting and the trees, because in reality, it's not going to happen. We have some other developments in the town that have said, oh, it'll be open to the public, it'll be accessible, and nobody from the public goes into those because there's an appearance that those are private little entities and, and residences. So those are some of the concerns I have. And I think that if initially it doesn't fit within the Santero Way specific plan because it doesn't fit within the small-town character of the city of Cattani, I don't know what you can do to make it look like that. Would you, you've got 30, 31.6 feet to the top of the roof line at the highest point, if I understand that correctly, and if I did the math correctly?
That sounds about right.
Okay, so why couldn't you put a little facade or some sort of a roof line on there besides a flat roof? I mean, what, what, why couldn't you make this look more Cattani-like versus more industrial and stark and, and just ultimate capacity? I mean, the project across the street that you did looks significantly better than these, I think.
I think I'll ask Guy Chambers to answer that question. He's put hundreds of hours in on this.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure he has. And, and I know that he has to, has to have varying components that he has to consider. And, and I'm completely aware of that.
To see if I can start with one very, very basic observation here, I think hopefully in your package, you have the cross-section that shows the comparative heights between our project with the flat roofs and the project across the street, the existing townhouses, 70 units of townhouses.
What page would that be on, do you know?
I apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Guy, are you sure that's in this plan set?
That's what I wanted, I'm, I'm not certain if it got included in this application.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't seen it since you bifurcated the project section.
Yeah, I think you might be right. So I apologize for that.
Okay.
In, in previous applications, one of the things that we wanted in discussions with staff was to, to make clear the observation that these buildings are in fact no higher than the existing townhouses. In fact, the peaks on the roofs on the existing townhouses, I believe, are actually higher than the parapets on this project. So that's one place to start.
So...
They are no higher than the existing townhouses on the east, excuse me, west side of Santero Way.
Okay.
All right? Observation number one. We tried to do that to keep them in scale, so I apologize if you're offended by our architecture. It's very, very similar in scale to what you just finished saying was a very lovely project.
In, in scale, size-wise and proportion?
Heights, widths, all that sort of stuff.
But not aesthetically?
Not aesthetics.
Okay.
And I think that one of the things that we were looking at very early on on this project was, we would like this project to be visually distinct from the private residences and the townhouses across the street, that there should be some visual distinction between the two projects so that you can identify the apartment project from somebody else's private residence and their townhome. The third thing that we were trying very hard to do was that, by its very nature, to try and do efficient developer housing is that we were trying to take what potentially, and I appreciate your observation about big industrial buildings somehow was what I thought I heard you say, we tried to take what are basically efficient buildings and develop a vertical expression of those buildings by breaking them down with turning corners. I mean, an architect can go out there and they can build a perfectly flat facade and put a gable roof on it, or a series of gable roofs. I would argue that's not as handsome as the effort that we've put into trying to modulate the facade in and out along the sidewalk. We've also tried to take what potentially is a three-story building and quite long and break it up into a whole series of vertical and identifiable elements to break down the scale of what potentially are very large buildings. Those are important things, I think visually. I think they're also important things from a distance. I think they're important things very close. The whole discussion about whether this should have a gable roof on it, I would argue that a three-story building with a gable roof and a sloping roof line, all you see from the street is the horizontal line of a gutter. You see the same thing, except we've taken the parapets and we've tried to articulate them up and down to get a rhythm up there so that it's not just one continuous flat line. So there's a whole series of things that we've worked very, very hard on to try and break these buildings down into smaller, more pedestrian scaled elements that I think, quite frankly, are reflective of what we were able to do by putting the short end of the buildings on the townhouses facing Santero Way. If you go back to our original scheme, we had buildings two and three rotated 90 degrees presenting the short elevation on the building to Santero Way. My personal opinion as an architect is that that's actually a much better expression. We were trying to respond to the specific plan and working with staff, which said, the specific plan says you have to put the long elevation of the building on Santero Way in the discussion. That's one of the changes that we made during the course of design. That's my opinion in conflict with the city's expressed opinion through the Santero Way specific plan. So the point to you is, we've worked very, very hard to try and take these buildings, break them down into a pedestrian scale, accepting the fact that they're three-story buildings, and that we have places for public open space on the street, or, excuse me, private open space on the street. We have a place for gardens, the building articulates and moves in and out against a straight sidewalk, and it's also broken up into a whole series of vertical elements within that longer facade, as well as adjusting the heights of the parapets in various locations to develop a certain rhythm rather than just potentially a continuous horizontal line.
And even on the heights of the parapets, you're only talking a six-foot difference? Six, three, if I...
They vary in height. I apologize, I don't, I don't have that in the back of my mind, right?
It is a difference, but it's not a significant difference. You know, maybe up close, but from a distance.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could, I, we found the sheet that Mr. Chambers was referring to, and I think it is helpful for everyone to look at it. It's Plan Set Sheet A2, it's Packet Page 93, 93 of your packet.
A2 point, or just A2?
A2, yes. So it's, yes, so... 2.0, I'm sorry, yes.
So to me, in looking at these programs... So, to me, in looking at these programs, I mean, these projects, and then you talk about a visual distinction, that's a significant distinction. That's, to me, visually, that's a significant distinction, and these, to me, look more like the small-town character of the city of Cattati, of which the Santero Way specific plan we use as a guideline. To me, I don't see this as a small-town character, and we've talked about this, we've talked about, we talked about it in our general plan, we talked about it on our specific plan.
I, I, excuse me for interrupting, I, I appreciate, I, I certainly respect and appreciate your position, but I'm having trouble trying to understand as an architect and as the applicant here, is that if in fact, through our drawings there, we demonstrate that they're both similar in the scale, I don't under, I'm, I'm missing your point, which is, how are they so wildly different? If, if one that's currently built represents the Cattati scale, and we have something in the drawings that represents something that's quite similar, how is it that the new application somehow is wildly not Cattati?
I, maybe we're getting caught up in the semantics of the words, and I'm, I'm not expressing what I think eloquently enough and with enough clarity. If you look at the existing project that's there on Santero Way, and you have garages, and more narrow, and taller, with gable roofs, and it looks like housing more, and then you look at the proposed project that you have, this looks like more of a commercial project with, oh, less than five percent commercial. I mean, that's the visual appearance of the project, and to me, I don't know that that's what was envisioned in that downtown specific plan for that area, this type of architectural rendering.
We, we actually have some really, I think, very lovely images, if I had the foresight to bring them, not necessarily that we're trying to duplicate or replicate anything that happens in San Francisco, but there's certainly lovely, lovely, you know, craftsmen and Victorian-style buildings in San Francisco that absolutely scream to me of residential, that take up an entire city block as one continuous facade.
Right.
All right, all I'm trying to say to you is, this is a contemporary version of something like that, where we've tried to break things up as you see the rhythm that happens in San Francisco on many, many streets, and as I said just a second ago, that will go continuously for a city block, an entire city block, and I think maybe that's what's being missed here
No, you're talking about...
...in interpretation, is that we're changing colors, we're moving the facades in and out relative to the sidewalk, we're trying to develop some verticality to break that down in the same way that San Francisco has those lovely streets.
San Francisco has a different character than Victoria has.
I appreciate that. It might be a bad example, but all I'm trying to say is, that to me does not smack of commercial warehouse. It tells me everything that I need as an architect, that this is a residential neighborhood.
And, and looking at the layout of these buildings and the open space and the patios that were, I guess, ideally a hundred and fifty square feet, and that we have less than twenty-five percent of those that are a hundred and fifty square feet, why not? I mean, to me, it seems like there's a heck of a lot of concessions made in this project for the higher level of density and the, to me, the presentation, and maybe the other council doesn't feel that way, but, but to me, the, the presentation of what you're presenting us for all of these concessions and a higher density is the minimum that could be done, in, in that regard. I mean, I, I don't see anything in reference to solar on here?
One of the conditions of approval actually includes a twenty percent solar component is a condition of approval.
And where would that solar be?
That would be up on the roof, and that's why we're putting in flat roofs and parapets to try and screen that.
Okay. There's no covered walkways for people to get in and out from their parking?
From the parking to the buildings, there are no covered walkways, correct.
Okay, and then if you're using that community parking that's next door, that's an even greater distance that you're gonna be walking from your vehicle to the building with no covered parking. I think you guys have done a tremendous job, and with what you have, I understand the idea that you want to maximize your return. I completely get that.
You know, excuse me for interrupting, but I find that insulting, sir. I don't think that we're approaching this strictly from an economic perspective, we expect to make a reasonable return for our investors, but I find that, you know, I've been listening to that for forty years, there are so many concessions that we are forced to make to get this level of density. We're not making any money.
I, I'm not saying that to...
Let me finish, please.
...to insult anybody.
All right, but it is insulting when I hear that in a public forum. There is no, I practiced architecture for over forty years, there are virtually no developers that can afford to do very low housing, period.
Okay, my statement was that, if you're investing in a project and you're trying to develop something, that you want to maximize your return on that. Is that not true?
That's absolutely true for every developer in America.
So, there's nothing insulting about that? That's a true statement, most companies, especially if they're in it for profit versus non-profit housing. And, and I don't want to be antagonistic on this. I just look at the project, and I look at how it fits into the rural Cattati character, and I'm not seeing it. I'm just not seeing it there. And I don't know about the rest of council, maybe you guys are seeing it.
Just to respond to that, I, I hear what you're saying, perhaps the original, I've already said how much I do like the look of the current neighborhood in which you've previously built there, and I've expressed that with the people walking through there. It's, I live on the other side of town, but I've been fortunate through this job to actually walk through there and see that it's nice, and it does have a nice look with the roofs and stuff, but I don't know if I call it, I mean, it's large, it doesn't strike me as really small Cattati, it is what you're gonna have with a larger building. I, I think what we have here is real simple, there's a need to make this pencil out, as we both agree, that's reasonable to some degree, that for their investment requires them to push for three stories. With three stories, you can't really match the same roof line as much as the community and the American, and myself frankly, I would prefer it looked, if I had my brothers and there was no density bonus, and we could make this pencil out, I would prefer it to look more like the original buildings, I agree with that, but we're not gonna be able to get there, particularly with the state density bonus, that particular possibility has sailed. So, from my perspective, I hear what you're saying, but this is not a small neighborhood of cottages, this is a larger area, you want something that looks nice. I would agree, it varies from the previous plan, and that's a problem, but unfortunately, due with that state density bonus, there's not much of a way around it. What's happened since then, though, is there's been a lot of movement to try and meet in the middle and all the other things that everybody wanted on the table, as we speak to parking, parks, working on the roadways, architectural fit and finish, and a lot of other things, including some of the things I saw for some of the private areas, and they're particularly the feather areas. They may be small, the small park areas, but they look very top-notch. So, that's my estimate, Mr. Mayor, it's helpful. I hear your complaints, I, I, I hear your concern, I agree with you. In a perfect world, I might like to see this look slightly different, but with the situation we have for all of us, I don't see that happening, and I don't see the wherewithal to be able to have a vote that makes it turn around and go the other way that works. If I did, maybe I would, I don't see it.
You've, you've got forty-eight units, that with the density bonus adds almost another fifty percent, up to seventy-four units.
I, I think that one observation also needs to be placed in context here, and that is, the state of California, in its infinite wisdom, has decided that it's important to place as much housing, affordable or otherwise, near transit systems, to increase the densities in very, very defined and localized areas, within a half a mile of transit hubs. The city of Cattati has an absolutely amazing, amazing opportunity to be at the forefront of what's going on in housing, to place density where it's most appropriate. There was a comment earlier about taking people and move, I didn't catch all, but putting them out someplace near the freeway. It would make no sense in Cattati or the state of California to place all that dense housing out next to the freeway, so people climb in their cars and sit in traffic.
I, I don't...
Incentivize people and place them next to the train station, and I think that in a few years, people's ideas will continue to change. What my firm did in San Francisco for many, many years was worked with developers on stations in and around the BART system. The BART system was a vision back in the forties or the fifties, they finally got it built when I was going to college at Berkeley in the sixties. It's now ready to be completely rebuilt, and the only way to do that is to take some of those parcels, make them available to developers, use that money to fix the trains, and try and get people off the highways. You guys have an absolutely amazing opportunity.
I, I understand that, and I understand the need for higher-density housing, and I understand the location next to the Smart Track. I don't think that the Smart Train is gonna be anything like BART's down the road, especially with, with, you know, two ends of that track that don't connect to anything else, certainly.
I just wanted to add maybe a slightly different perspective of, from a visual perspective, so I, I really think, when I first saw these drawings some time ago, the, if there was a company out there that wanted to maximize profit, if you will, it would have been a box. This is not a box. There's a lot of three-dimensional depth, you know, the, the flat roof line, I totally get what Mr. Mattler was saying, and I heard it at the planning commission meeting, would that look better? Absolutely, but would it make these things almost a whole nother story high, which I think would even take, really take away from the visuals? So, you know, when I, when I look at these conceptual drawings as they are, but they can be built as such, the three-dimensional depth going in and out was, this is just me talking, incredibly attractive to me. So there's a completely different perspective from what you're seeing and from what I saw or what I still see. So, I, I don't see this as sort of a, a cookie-cutter box, let's just put it in right here on this lot, and we can walk away from it. I have a completely different perspective on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, this is, I mean, this is the dialogue, this is the conversation that we need to have, I think.
In order for the roofs to be like the other ones, correct me if I'm wrong, we would go way up above our height limits, 'cause these seem to be at our height limits now, sorry, I have something in my throat. So to get the pointy roofs, which is, I think, part of the look that you're, that you're looking for is, is this kind of a roof line, we would have to, because they have to be a certain pitch, we would have to put them up so steep that they would be pretty big, whereas these, as I understand it, are about the same height...
That's correct.
...as the ones that are there, which is, I think, what you were trying to achieve.
That is, that's exactly what we were trying to achieve.
Okay.
I can tell it has the sin of looking different, but still looking good.
And I, and I guess as far as, you know, what the, the street looks like, I think what I heard was the intention was to make it look a little bit different, so it didn't look like it was just one big development...
That's correct.
...that all looked the same. Now, let me ask you this another way, so you have one more lot, what are you guessing that, that would that take on it, at an even more different look in your kind of architectural mind?
We have spent zero time on what that back lot would look like or be developed. Here's what we've spent time on. If anything's going on back there, there has to be fire access addressed. That's the next part of the project. Before anybody figures out, well, what could you put back there, the first thing you have to figure out is, you need another way of getting in and out of Santero Way. That problem gets solved next.
Okay, okay. So I, you know, I, I think that that's kind of the intention here, is to not make it look like it's one of the same development, which is, I think, what I hear you saying is you wish that it looked more like the other one.
No, I, I said that their project that's there on the east side of Santero Way looks like a nice project. This project does not look like the character of Cattati that we have specified in both our general plan and our specific plan. I don't see how it looks like that, and, and that's just my vision on there. Now, another question along those same lines, and it, and it addresses the size and scope of this project, is in that specific plan, does it mandate the minimum number of units that need to be in there? I mean, you said there's a build-out of a hundred and ninety-nine units?
For the entire specific plan area, yes.
Maximum?
Yes.
There's no minimum?
There's no minimum.
Okay.
There was a minimum that was assumed for the EIR, and there's an expectation that if you build the forms that are prescribed, you will get a minimum number of units, but it's not regulated. And I, I do just want to add that you're sort of forced into the point of having the discussion that we've had over the course of nearly a year in the space of an hour, and so I understand all the issues that you're grappling with. If you took their project and you applied all of the waivers and the concessions to it, you would get to a project that was consistent with the specific plan. I mean, basically, all of those standards are what the project could not meet, because the specific plan was envisioning something else. So you're absolutely right that this project isn't what you would get when you read through all of those development standards. However, we could not get to the point of saying, oh, no, you can do this development standard or that development standard, and your project will still work. We went through all of that analysis.
So we have two state mandated waivers we have to adhere to?
Two mandated waiver, excuse me, two concessions...
Concessions.
...and nine waivers.
And nine, so the nine waivers, we are allowing for this project to look something like this. That's in essence what you're asking us to do right now.
We're allowing them in the sense that we could not make the finding to preclude them from being, from, to preclude them from happening. So the state law says that we can't impose, we cannot impose a development standard that physically precludes the project from being developed at the proposed densities.
At the proposed densities?
At the proposed...
With, with the affordable housing?
Yes.
Caveats in that.
Yes, yes. And I might add...
Let me ask you this, and I don't know that we are gonna go there, and I don't know that the other rest of the council is even considering going there, but just for my own notification on this, and so that I understand, if we said, no, you can't have forty-eight units, you can have thirty-five units, and it will take the higher-density component on that, that would be feasible within that project if it were to pencil out for the investors?
No, so, maybe I wasn't clear earlier when, when you asked me about minimums. So the specific plan assumes a build-out of every parcel that's included in it within the plan area, and it assumes a density, it assumes a number of units, I should say, which is inclusive of commercial and inclusive of residential on the mixed-use portions.
Right.
And so for this, for these parcels, that number was forty-eight.
With the higher percentage of commercial?
With the higher, I'll have to ask the story.
Because if I look at the, the, the land supply in Cattati, and I look at the commercial, we don't have a lot left, and then what we do have left, very little of that is gonna be commercial in this particular area with this project way it is here. I mean, the numbers are startlingly low. There's, the, the other components that I want to take into, and this isn't part of the bigger picture, Measure G is gonna sunset in seven years, you know, we're gonna be, I, I'm cautious about giving up so much commercial space at this point.
Certainly, at a basic level, more commercial is good for this community, and we certainly need it, and I, and I think, looking in retrospect and seeing that train station pull into that section... section town, if I could turn back the hands of time 30 years, change the zoning there, and make sure that was a stronger commercial center, really hooked it very strongly with our downtown in a nice little T-section, we'd be sitting in a much better place. But with the way that's built, that's just not likely to happen at this point. I do know, one thing I heard, the quote was 10 years absorption.
That's correct, sir.
You and I have not talked about it, but I actually heard that about a year and a half ago, I think. I'm trying to remember, was it the Sonoma County Line? Somebody basically had, people working in the office industry. And these were some shell-shocked people. That was essentially the gist of the presentation. They were still upset years later after the crash, they'd basically, the bottom had dropped out of the commercial market in this entire county from their perspective, and was likely to be that way for years to come. And I do believe a decade was the timeframe tossed out. Having heard that in a few places, I think there's some sense of truth to it. I, I still believe there's a chance for a small, the small amount that you set aside to be workable there, particularly if perhaps it is slated more to serve the residences themselves, because I agree with you, getting outside commercial to draw down that street for goods and uses is going to be difficult. But with that, that is a true thing, so I think there's some general truth to that. I, I, I hear the general concern, I, I just think that honestly, all things considered, this is something that I can see supporting, because I don't see any other options. If we say no to this, we lose housing that people need, we lose the ability to fix the parking for these people, we lose the ability to improve access for the fire district, which remains a blot in my mind that we all made a mistake on. We lose a lot of benefit, and the one place I agree on, I do wish that it could have looked more the same. I guess I'm just a little late on the ten. If I agree, I'd like it to look like the old neighborhood, but to get the density you need, you require that. State law says we need to do that, and within that, I would agree with my colleague, Mr. Galasso, that it looks very nice. It's a different style, a little more modern, but it is very good-looking from what I can see from plans. If you build it according to the plan, it should be very nice.
It is a different style. It's a style that says it's an apartment building. And I will point out one thing that actually really matters. Commercial and the affordable, this discussion of return on investment, it's got to get built. I can't borrow against commercial or affordable. The banks won't lend us money.
You know, I, I hear that argument, and I've heard it before, and, and I understand that you are buying a piece of property on speculation that you would hopefully be able to develop onto that property and make some money on there. So that's not a concern that I have at the moment, because that's really, it's not. My concern is that we have one crack at this, for this community, and that's going to be there for a long time to come. So I want to make sure that the project of what that goes in there is going to be most like we've talked about in the general plan and the specific plan. And I don't know that I see that hypothetically.
I only point that out so that the council as a whole can understand that there is this tightrope that we walk.
Absolutely.
So that we get the maximum number of affordable units under the density bonus law within the state of California code.
The maximum number of affordable units also is allowing you to have additional units on there.
That, that is true, and if we don't get those additional units, we would not be able to build the affordable units.
So if, if for some reason hypothetically, the council were to say, no, this isn't the project that we want here, nothing would be built there?
Nothing would be built there, because I couldn't borrow against it, sir.
I, I, I appreciate your response. I don't know if I agree with it, but I appreciate it.
Well, I, I will point out one thing. I mentioned at the beginning that in the partnership, I'm the banking part.
Right.
So I've spent 10 years in a major bank, 18 years building a major investment firm that invests in lots and lots of real estate, and I have been in hundreds of bankers meetings, including six specific to this project. And all I'm doing is reflecting back what those six banks, from the very biggest in the world to the very smallest I could find in, in the Bay Area, what they've told me, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Neil. Go ahead.
So you made an important point, and I think that that's, that these are apartment buildings.
That's correct.
And so when I look at this from that context, if you look at a lot of the other apartment buildings in Cattati, they are just big boxes. And a lot of them don't even have balconies or, or private areas or any of that. And I've walked a lot of the apartment buildings, and this has at least the features of, of having the ins and outs and the balconies and all that to give them a little bit of character, because most of our apartment buildings don't look like that. Now, that's in contrast to the other buildings that are already there, and those are condos, which are a little bit different. Now, if, even in this particular set of buildings, if you look at the ones in the back, in back of the park, they are our apartments, and they are very box-like, and they don't look like this. They are very.
These are the loft ones you're talking about?
No.
No, no, the corner buildings.
The corner buildings are apartment buildings. They're just boxes, and they're, they have like nothing. You walk up the stairs, and they're kind of dark and, you know, kind of scary.
So none of these units will be owner-occupied? They'll all be apartments?
They are apartments.
They're all.
None of them are townhouses?
No.
Okay. So how do you maintain that affordability after 55 years or whatever it is? You'll be gone, I'll be gone, I don't know who will be running it.
Well, the, the onsite manager is going to be handed, in essence, a complete program of what has to be under, what has to be given to him or her under state law with respect to income support, to determine who qualifies for the very low, the low and the moderate.
Okay.
So that person then has to go through all of the imaginations of gathering all that information to determine, okay, I can rent this to these, this group of people, there's three people that applied for this unit that meet the test, and they're, they actually would not be renting a full market rate unit, they would qualify for the lower units.
Right.
Right.
And so.
But that has to continue for 55 years.
Okay. So at the end of 55 years, that's whatever the market will dictate or command.
I would be amazed if at the end of 55 years, the building would support anything, it'll still be apartments? You know, but before this concept of affordable housing was described in great detail to all of us, when all of us left college, apartments were affordable housing, and I suspect there'll still be apartments, sir.
Right.
So I think they'll be affordable wherever the relative basis is at that point.
Okay. Well, I've expressed my concerns. I don't know that the existing council has the same concerns. I would propose that if we're going to make some concessions, that we not put a sunset on affordability for those homes, and, and need that into the development. And then down the road, whatever affordability looks like, if somebody moves out of that apartment, then a qualifying citizen could come into that.
On the density bonus units, the requirement is state law, which is 55 years, and I'm going to ask Robin if there's any tolerance for the local regulations on inclusionary.
On inclusionary, well, first of all, right now, I think your ordinance puts your figure on it, so I'd, we'd have to take a look at our ordinance, we might need to amend that. There have been individual projects over time where the city will put a longer period of affordability on it, even perpetuity, but because this is a density bonus for sure, I think I have, there would be some problems with trying to go over the 55 years for the inclusionary units, which I think would just be, what, a fewer portion of the total affordable that may be a possibility. The other thing I was just thinking about as you were talking, Mr. Mayor, was there have been other ways of continuing the affordability at the end of the initial 55-year period. For example, some cities will, at that point, either find a new affordable housing developer or will use their own inclusionary or other housing money available to them and, you know, buy out the affordability or subsidize continued affordability. Sometimes you'll have a real estate partnership that is, may get some kind of a tax advantage from taking over those apartments, so it's, I don't have it very well thought out, but I know that there, and I haven't been around to see the end of the 55-year term, but I have read about and heard about various mechanisms for extending that period of affordability. Can certainly take a look at the inclusionary ordinance, but I can't say tonight that we could definitely make that a condition of approval. Could look at it.
Well, I think you've heard my concerns about it, and at this point, I'll bring it back to the council, and if they have any further questions. If not, then we'll, we'll look for a motion.
You know, I think the 55-year period is a significant period of time, and even though I love the word perpetuity, and I tried to use it on a different topic earlier this year, and it fell apart.
Well, I believe 40 years ago, we voted rent control in Cattati, and then it was repealed. Well, now 40 years has gone by in a flash, so 55 is not very much, and we have no idea what the economy is going to be down the road or what the community will be. You know, I don't, I don't know if that would include, you know, five college students? Probably not. I mean, the idea of the affordability concept is for either an individual or a small family or a larger family, and then as they mature and things financially get better for them, they probably move on to something else. You know, maybe they don't want the apartment living.
Sure.
So I don't, I don't think 55 is a lot.
So I, and I'm, I'm willing to make a motion, but I'm not willing to extend beyond what staff has recommended, simply because that's a whole nother discussion, and I'd want to spend a lot of time thinking about it and not just make a rash decision tonight to say, well, let's put some stipulation on there that it's 80 years or it's in perpetuity. I'm not, I'm not willing to do that tonight. I won't know if we can amend it afterwards.
Why would you call that rash if you're going to have?
It's rash because I'm not having enough time to think about it.
But if you're having a higher density component of this whole project, and that's all about the, the state of California saying we need more affordable housing, right? And, and then to put a, a limit on that and say that that's not going to go on, I don't, I don't see that as rash, but.
Well, again, my reason for using that word is simply because I would want more time to put real thought into it. And I know we've been talking about this for a little over two hours now, that's not enough time. Believe it or not, it would be a 12-hour meeting here if you wanted to sit through that, but we're not going to do that tonight.
As Vicky pointed out, they've been grappling with some of this stuff for a long time, much more than two hours.
So I'm, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion, and if there's no second to it, we can.
I wonder if we could, as I understood, and I'll support your motion, but I wanted to see one thing, perhaps we could add to it that might be helpful. As I understood the description from our legal staff on potential options, 55 years down the road, again, I've looked in the mirror this morning, I don't think it's something I'm going to worry about terribly myself, but it is right, it goes quickly. I know that now. That, that wasn't so much a developer-based restriction, it was something that you said some cities work to find ways to do that. So there's no reason we couldn't have staff come back in the future with plenty of time to take a look at what options we could perhaps commit the city to, to make sure that continues past then, without impacting the ability to pass this tonight. With that, if my colleague be willing to add that as part of the motion direction to staff to look into that and see what exactly options we might have, if they're ones we want to take, then I'd second that.
We, we would not have a problem with that.
Do we need?
It wouldn't involve you, so I would imagine you'd be good with it, yes.
That is correct, sir.
Just my guess.
Oh, I'm looking at staff, do we need to make that a part of the motion, or is that simply direction that you've heard and, you know, we're, if we're all in favor of that?
You can certainly make it part of the motion if you, if cementing it feels better, or you could rely on us. We, we're exploring a variety of housing monitoring and purchase options right now. So at some point before the end of the fiscal year, we will bring forward a couple of different options for the council to think about. We're already working on those. So I don't yet know exactly what that's going to look like. I don't know that we'll have pure answers for any of it, but we can at least figure out kind of the council and the community's tolerance for various options. So we're already working on that, if, if you're comfortable with that.
So I, I mean, I would, I would be far more comfortable in giving staff direction tonight, only because I'd be afraid of making a motion and saying something that could be inaccurate or misinterpreted down the road, which I'd rather not, and if you're moving in that direction, I mean, I feel.
My amendment's just for the added direction that staff, I believe, has copied ably.
Okay.
Councilmember Galasso.
Does, does that help at all, Mr. Mayor?
If, to back you up a minute, I, I missed what the clarification was that Vicky just talked about on there. I was looking down at my notes when you said that.
Just here was general, what I took from it, Mr. Mayor. When our legal counsel, Ms. Donnie, was talking about some of the ways that dealing with keeping affordability past 55 years was done, what I heard was it wasn't so much encumbered on the dealer. The one thing we don't get to put on you, unfortunately, it was something that cities and local municipalities found ways to fund to some degree themselves, long-term planning, investment, in new funds. I'm not sure what it would be, but I would imagine it would look something like that. And it struck me that because that would be the funding mechanism to extend beyond the state law of 55 years, then there's no reason we couldn't pass this tonight, and then have staff bring that back for all of us to look at, discuss, see if it's helpful, so we can begin the process, maybe locks that afford to build longer. And obviously, there'll be something you'll have to assess, it'll be a cost-benefit ratio, I'm sure, but we'll have the chance to look at that, and maybe you can put something in place that will make this last even longer. I wouldn't promise that, because we have to see what we get, but that would be, that's what I was suggesting.
Okay. How do we verify the affordability of these units?
The applicant will have to enter into an affordable housing agreement with the city, and that will have monitoring requirements in it, monitoring and reporting requirements, so we'll have to monitor.
I'm much more comfortable with that than I was previously, because years ago, oh, 30 years ago, when we had some affordable units that the city would make down payments on for housing, there was no tracking mechanism. So then, 10 years later, they're sold, and all that capital is realized by those affordable unit residents, and then, then it's off the market.
But we also didn't have these agreements in place either, and there were quite a lot, I know, that were built, and, and there weren't.
They were affordable, but they were never tracked.
Well, they were, they were built as affordable, and then, you know, right off the bat, the person that built it all of a sudden moved in. Well, that person, you know, so I think that a lot of evolution has happened because people have gotten burdened by, by that kind of stuff. So I, I think that that's sort of what you're saying, that these agreements and monitoring are in place, and I'm assuming that there's fines and, and the like for not doing what you're supposed to do. But, but what, what Councilmember Landman's talking about, I think, you know, taking an approach, a looking at it from a citywide perspective, might give us a broader perspective on not just this project, but all of our, our stock that we have and what.
Right, which is another conversation altogether.
Which is probably.
Which may or may not happen.
But, yeah.
Right? So I, I know that there's monitoring provisions that are going to be within this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so I'm more comfortable with that. And with that, I, I've kind of expressed my concerns on this. Do I think that this is the best project for that area, for Cattati at this time? No. Do I think you guys could have done a better job? Absolutely. With that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Did you want to see if there's any new and relevant information?
I can reopen it up for the public comment. Ms. Alderman.
As someone whose family has lived here 44 years, and I was, I remember when that was off field, and I actually knew the engineer of the train that went down the track, I'm pretty good at knowing what's going on here. You, as the city, have not taken any responsibility for how you planned this all. This was both when the Smart Train was being set up and everything, you're supposed to have transit dense right by the tracks. That's what these guys did. They've done everything possible for you. You took their parking lieu, you took their developmental impact fees, and you spent them on downtown.
We heard this.
Excuse me!
We heard this.
I am speaking.
I know you are.
I have documentation I can send you if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, excuse me!
Now, are you adding to this conversation on whether you think this should be moved or not?
I am commenting. I am doing a public comment. You cannot interrupt.
You already made a public comment on this prior to...
No, we just opened it for a public comment.
I opened it as a courtesy if there was something you'd like to add to the conversation.
You cannot do this.
Actually, you've already provided the regular three-minute public comment. It's the council's discretion whether to hear any additional comment, if there's anything new. If it's repetitive or redundant, you don't need to permit it.
I'm not repetitive.
And you don't need to observe the three-minute limit at this point because it's not the regular public comment.
Okay, what are you adding to?
And do not interrupt me, please. I've had enough of this city. I'm sorry, I need a second. This should have been, you should have had the vision 10, 15 years ago. You put them through... Excuse me!
Say it again.
Let me have more than one sentence. Okay? This downtown, you spent all this money, and there was a transit center, a future transit center. You never put them together. And now you're putting it on them. This, and as far as growth, there was not more than four new residences in nine years, new building permits. This has been in the works. This has been a big thing. This is all about planning. And I wish you'd consider yourself, consider your response when, yes, I don't really like the density either. I don't like how it's worked, but it's how it has to be because of what your bad planning too. You don't just put it all on the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Since I've opened it up for public comment, I'm willing to entertain some more if there are other people that are interested.
Thank you. I'll just be minimally repetitive just for a moment because you guys just talked quite a bit about roof lines. And my understanding, and just to... I do like the design. I think it's really nice. And I did say that before. I think that if they did do a parapet that had gables, that would be fake, kind of like in San Francisco, they could still have their flat roof behind it. It wouldn't add any height to the building. And then they could have mini gables with kind of a craftsman look down below to kind of cut it up. So that's kind of what I was trying to describe earlier. So it wouldn't change the height of the building. I do think that guy's design is very nice. It just doesn't fit what I see for a residential community in Cattati. So I just wanted to say that. And then, again, I think that this development is good. It's not great. It's too dense, and the parking is much better than it was before. It's still not enough because we do need to look at bedrooms. So we are going to still have problems. I would say that we should look at having dumpsters for the current existing buildings and get rid of all the garbage cans completely on that street. I think it would be better for the new development as well. I'm assuming that this is going to pass and that we're going to have this new neighbor for our community. And I think that will be a good addition. And again, speed bumps, I don't think is good. Speed humps, which are the longer, more mellow, I think is a good plan. I think that the street could really use it because speeding is a problem. And they're not as noisy. People don't come to a screeching hall and smash over them. And the speed dots are da-da-da-da, 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 all day long and all night long. Thank you for spending as much time as you are. And I just wanted to appreciate that and as well the team that has been doing this. And hopefully, this turns out better than we all see that it might. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this before I re-close public comment? Seeing that, I'll re-close that and bring it back to the council.
Are we ready for a motion?
You've got a motion in a second.
Certainly.
May I ask a question first?
If the question's not related to me, then absolutely, sure. Go ahead.
So can we do anything about the trash receptacles in the existing? Is that something that is even possible? It's really a nightmare out there.
I'm speaking completely off the cuff, but I think the challenge would be finding sufficient area for the trash enclosures without removing parking.
Ooh, that would be bad.
Well, now we're getting off into another project altogether, and we haven't agendized that.
Okay, that's fine. But so there's possibilities, is what I hear. Okay, that makes me happier.
We'll bring that up with the affordable housing component, panel out.
Yeah.
With that, I'm looking for directions.
Is this the time where I make a motion to take a restroom break? No, we'll move on. I move to adopt a resolution approving preliminary design review for Cattati Station Apartments with changes in the orientation of on-street parking from angled to perpendicular, as well as a use permit for a density bonus in order to build 74 apartment units and 5,540 square feet of commercial space with associated parking on 2.42 acres on the east side of Sentera Way.
Second?
Actually, I will second that. Or you can second it with the direction we added also to staff to bring back the aforementioned about looking to long-term affordability past 55 years. Because we promised we'd add that as part of this.
Are you okay with that? That's fine with my motion, yes.
Fine, we'll accept that.
And seeing a motion in a second, I will call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Skilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Deloago?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work on there. And we're going to take a five-minute recess. If you went along with me, it would have been fine. Okay, we're going to reconvene. Sorry for the delay on that. Have to get back to where we were. So according to our rules that we had and voted on a couple of years ago, any agenda item that we take up after 10 o'clock has to be by a unanimous vote of the council. So...
Majority vote.
Majority vote. Pardon me.
Let's move ahead.
So I need a motion if we want to go further with these agenda items?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that means with that, we will not go beyond midnight.
Did you want me to give staff direction that they have two minutes for each staff report from the rest of the night? Should I have added that?
We can always defer the staff reports. Okay. So that was just item A on the public hearings. Now we'll move on to... We're going to flip the agenda, if that's okay. And we are going to... You were talking about moving the groundwater sustainability agency from the public hearings, from the regular agenda, to between the two public hearing items. Is that correct? 10A and 10B, we're going to make 11A the next item?
Just moving to the first item on the regular agenda, 11A, and then coming back to 10B.
To the ordinance, okay. So if I have a consensus with the council, are we okay with that? Okay, Mr. Obed and Mr. Scott, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council. Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item is on the update on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SIGMA. There's a lot of acronyms here we use in this presentation, so just be aware of that. In October, this item was brought before council on establishing principles to give to the eligible entity staff work group to move forward and work through governing principles. And so that's what we're here, just sort of getting right to the point. That's what we're here for tonight, is to review what this work group has been working on for the last four, five, six, well, a year, actually, now, on this. And we've endeavored, the work group has endeavored to reach consensus. And it has gone back to ad hoc groups. Or, you know, just in August, the city itself assigned a council representative, Ms. Harvey, to be our designated representative on this topic. But that's just kind of a quick summary of what we're here for tonight. We have Jay Jasperz from the Water Agency here to help us respond to any questions that you have following an abbreviated presentation. So much of this is review. And so I'll just kind of skip over it and look at what's really, the progress that has been made over the last year. So... So just the overview, basically. Really go quickly over the summary and background of the Sustainability Act, and then how we've implemented it for our county. And highlight the staff-recommended governance structure, which is really what we're getting, seeking direction from council on tonight. And talk briefly about the startup costs that have been researched and public stakeholder involvement. So briefly, in 2014, the State Department of Water Resources, well, the state, they sustained, passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which became law in 2014. And that requires agencies that are defined by the state law as being eligible to form groundwater management agencies by June 2017. And the significance there is if, this is basically an unadjudicated, it's California, basically, has unadjudicated groundwater basins. And other states have adjudicated their basins, which means that they have, you have made efforts to measure the groundwater and really kind of budget it to make them sustainable. And so this is a significant act for the state. And the city certainly wants to have influence in this process, as with the other agencies, cities in Sonoma County. There's choices that the act provides us is we could all get together and cooperatively form a groundwater sustainability agency, or the individual cities could form their own and have to cooperate and work together through other agreements. And so one of the principles that was passed back in October was to work cooperatively and come together through perhaps JPA's joint powers agreements so that it's not all disjointed and we're all doing, you know, it would simplify the business of reaching sustainability in our basin. The sort of high-level look at the schedule is presented here. We're focused on step one, forming the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Step two is the first charge of that agency is to develop a groundwater sustainability plan. And then step three, out in 20 years, is through all of these actions, reach sustainability in our basin. And it's really contrast, the situation in our basin is contrasted with other basins in the state that are really dropping dramatically. Our basin is, you know, in a pretty good, healthy situation. It's really, it has been characterized as a medium priority basin. And looking at the criteria, that's one of the criteria is population. So it almost doesn't have to do with the health of the basin. It's just how significant is that basin in the state. Just quickly, these sustainable groundwater agencies are provided with, you know, authorities to help achieve that sustainability goal. And they're listed here. In Sonoma County, we have the three basins that are, have been well documented by the state and studied by the Water Agency. We've got the Petaluma Valley Basin, Santa Rosa Plain Basin, and the Sonoma Valley Basin. And of course, the one that's highlighted is the basin that we're in. And these are all of the agencies that are within that. So we have the six cities and the three agencies. One thing is to note is the eligible entities that's identified in the state law, it's defined as an agency that either has water supply management, land use authority, or I think those are the two. And so you've got some, an agency like the Water Agency that has the water supply management responsibilities, but no land use. But they're in as an eligible agency. And then as part of the process over the last year, the question came up as to, what is it, resource conservation districts, RCDs? We have the Sonoma RCD and the Gold Ridge RCD. And there's some interest there in them becoming part of the governing board. And so that question went back to the state. It wasn't just us that had asked this question. It was sort of statewide. And the answer came back from the state that those RCDs are, in fact, eligible entities. Then you see the mutual and CPUC-regulated water suppliers on that list. They're not defined as eligible entities, but they can participate in this process through an agreement with the eligible entities. So that's why they're on that list. So locally, you know, part of the charge a year ago was to have an aggressive outreach program, as well as determining the governance recommendations and completing a stakeholder assessment. Okay, so obviously, just reading off the slide there, a lot of the effort has been to go out and identify the stakeholder groups and have a series of workshops, which were completed, and to garner the input and have that input help shape the governance recommendations. There's a number of items on that slide, one of which is, you know, the advantages to pulling together and acting as one is the economy of scale, the economics of pulling all of our resources together and going after a grant. And so the group did manage to get a proposition, one grant, for data management efforts coordinated between the three basins. Instead of all of us acting as our own silos and doing, you know, completing similar tasks, we just sort of set up the database together and keep one giant database for the three basins. And that would save us a lot of money, especially with the $250,000 grant. Let's see. The structures of review is to have a GSA form for each one of the groundwater basins with agreements between the three. So there's a number of agencies in each one of these basins. So there's a number of agencies in each one of these basins, but they're, were proposed to, this was what was decided back in a year ago, was to then form the GSA, one each for each of the basins. And then just a list of the coordination advantages of coordinating between, or this is a list of what would potentially need to be coordinated between the basins. Just development of funding mechanisms is already, that Prop. 1 grant was submitted on behalf of all three basins. For example, if there's any projects that would go across the basin boundaries, there'd be obvious coordination needed for that, and just a number of other things. Okay, so here, here's the principles that guided the work group over the past year to develop the governing principle, governing recommendations, which we'll jump into right now. So this is the crux of the presentation tonight. This is what's being developed. So again, the GSA eligible entities are determined by the state, they're defined by that state. The GSA board, we're looking at one representative from each GSA eligible entity. The city is an eligible entity, so we'd get one vote. There are nine eligible entities on the board, and we'd be one of those nine. There's voting, we're looking at, and you could see the attachment to the staff report. We're looking at a two-tiered voting system, with the first tier being one vote per entity, and then needing a majority to then pass, and then a tier two would, was developed to try to make sure that the different interests were accommodated. And so we have land use entities, and we have non-land use entities. And so the land use entities are proposed to be in one voting block, and the non-land use entities in the other, and so you get this six and one, and three and the other, and then you need a majority of the six, and then a majority of the, two out of the three of that second block to, for any motion to go forward. Okay, so that, you've got the composition of the governing board being representatives from each of the entities, and one point that was debated with, between the different entities was, is that, should we make that an elected on that board, or can it be staff or someone from the community on the GSA board? And the compelling argument was made, and I think it's safe to say a majority of the agencies have gone with an elected because of the, how important and significant this act is. It provides the GSA with tools, pretty powerful tools, to assist, to manage the basin. It's, you know, monitoring the well use and measuring, measuring the well use and making decisions on imposing fees and moving forward with capital projects to help accomplish that goal. So because of the significance of the decisions to be made by the GSA, the recommendation here is that the city join the others and have an elected be on the board. I think Roanoke Park was the one that was looking at having a, you know, staff on that, on the board, and they, my understanding tonight is that they had the item earlier this evening, and my understanding is that they went with the elected to be on the board. So we're looking at having a consensus for that item. The next area is the advisory body, and Jay could speak to this during the discussion if you've got questions about it. But there was an extensive outreach program with public workshops over the past year, and there, the input from that process was to have, to ensure that the board will, well, let me skip to this, the advisory body would be a strong advisory body with clear responsibilities, in that the body includes, include a scientist, and want a balance between appointees of municipal water districts, suppliers, and other interests, want to ensure that rural residential well owners are represented by someone with broad perspective, and then finally don't want to, they didn't want to lose the expertise of existing basin advisory panels. So there's that panel that exists today, want to carry on with that knowledge base. So rolling all that in, make sure that the interests are all represented, and it'd be a strong advisory body. The recommendation from the working group is that there are nine members from, that are at large, and they're based there, they're from the, one representing each of the eligible entities, and they're just be appointed each one by that eligible entity, so you've got the nine, one-to-one with that group. And then the, the interest-based groups, we would have defined nine that are here, two environmental representatives, a rural, two rural residential well owner representatives, a business community representative, two agricultural interests, Greatin Rancheria and the Gold Ridge RCD, and these would be filled by having individuals apply to be on the advisory committee, and for the GSA board to then make that decision on who would be appointed to that, selected to sit on the advisory committee. So the advisory committee, nine plus nine would be 18 on that, and their role would be to review and provide, review recommendations to, and make recommendations to the governing body on significant items to come before the board, particularly the groundwater sustainable plan, the GSP, Sustainability Plan. The agency eventually would be envisioned, of course, to have its own staff, and the staff would hire a consultant or prepare these plans or prepare budgets, and then these budgets would then be vetted through the advisory committee first, and then that recommendation would come to the governing body, and the governing body could either agree or disagree with that recommendation. They would not be beholden to agree with it. I think at this time, we have the recommendations, which I've pretty much covered at this point. And again, what we're, staff is asking for, as with the other eligible entities going to their respective councils and boards, is direction on the governance recommendations, the composition of the board, the voting, and the composition of the advisory committee. So at this time, I'd like to, that concludes the presentation. Again, we've got Jay Jasperz here from the Water Agency and myself to help respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I will say I have some strong reservations about the aspect of governance as currently put forward for this particular organization. But two questions just to start. First of all, and I think you've answered one already, by being described as GSA eligible by the state, does that absolutely then require that allow that that agency has a presence on the board? In the case of the resource conservation districts, because the state has recently found them to be GSA eligible, that means absolutely they have a seat in the board, and that is not up for discussion? Or is that in fact something that is fallible?
That is our recommendation. The state allows just any entity, so for example, Cotati could become a GSA, and we could be outside of this group.
I was just looking to see if we were boxed into a corner with this, and after we have public comment, I'll explain further in my comments what my concerns are about that, but I just wanted to get a sense if that was a requirement, because it seems that way a little bit from the presentation, and perhaps it's not as clear-cut. The other question, what I really wanted to ask about, but I want to make sure I understand it completely before I dig into it. The proposed two-tiered voting system, is this to be used for every single vote then would have that two-tiered component? So in other words, if we're voting on something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, every vote that would come before the body would have to pass those two tests.
I think it's more appropriate for me to get into my concerns after public comment, but I see some significant problems with this, which I would like to discuss for the rest of the council.
You know, I'm sorry, if I could just add one thing to that, and Craig or Jay might be able to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if you, in terms of the groundwater basin boundaries, you can make a couple of choices as an eligible entity. You can either, as Craig said, form your own GSA, you could choose to participate in some sort of collaborative or regional GSA, or you could decide you don't want to be on the GSA and just do nothing and let your territory, so to speak, be subject to whatever GSA forms over it.
I don't think you're going to see us want to take that option. I'm fully supportive of the concept and the need for this, and I think you can imagine I wholeheartedly am interested in seeing us participate fully in this, but I want to make sure it's something that's workable, and as I suggested, probably best reserve the rest of this when it's appropriate time to have that discussion. This is more questions.
Even though we know where you're going with this.
And I, well, I only, I only-
Not a good poker face, Mr. Mayor, no?
I only, I only say that really just because in the case of the Sonoma RCD, this GSA that's being proposed would include the territory of that RCD, so I think if they wanted to be on, and I'll be corrected, I'm sure shortly if I'm wrong on this, but I think if they wanted to be on the board, they, I don't think they could be, refuse to be on the board because we're covering their territory.
Good, thank you. That was the question I had, and that was what I would have inferred, I'm seeing a head nod from the audience, so that does answer that. Thank you.
Is this the entity that you're talking about that incorporates the top of the bay there, the Sonoma RCD?
No, no, actually, we had had some previous discussion about potential participants of concern in this, and that was not the one I'm particularly thinking of. But again, I have some good comments, I believe, for you that I'd like to get some feedback on for, see where we go, but I should wait a second.
Vice Mayor.
So am I correct that you said that generally speaking, everyone has said that they wanted elected officials on there?
Correct.
So last I checked, the Water Agency does not elect a board. The Water Agency is run by the Board of Supervisors, which then therefore has the Board of Supervisors for all intents and purposes on here twice. Correct?
Yes, and that is something that had, was discussed, that can the supervisors, you know, vote one way with the Water Agency, wearing their Water Agency hat and vote independently with their county of Sonoma hat on, and would they ever really vote differently in that situation, or would it always be just voting as one?
Not without fallout.
I'm sorry, Jay, do you want to respond?
Well, the Sonoma County Water Agency is a different legal entity, so it's a different legislative legislature, and so in that role, they are required to act as the Board of Directors of the Sonoma County Water Agency. It's the same five people.
But they're not elected to that position.
Well, it's through their offices that, their offices are also not just Board of Supervisors, it's for different other agencies that are in charge of open space district, sanitation districts, the Water Agency, et cetera. So that, it's a legally separate entity, and as a joint powers agreement, it's incumbent upon, in the joint powers authority law, that as a member of a JPA, you're supposed to represent the whole JPA, not just your own agency that you're appointed by on the board, so presumably that would apply too.
I just would point out that it's the same people, and they basically will get two seats, because it will be two Board of Supervisors directors on there, and they will, with this voting structure, they will get to vote in two blocks, correct? They will, so that's all.
So the Sonoma County Water Agency is not beholden to the Board of Supervisors?
Of course they are. They're the same people, so.
Same.
Yeah, it's the same board. What he said is they put a different hat on, but it's the same people, and that's what's pointed out, would they vote, why would they ever vote one way on one vote and the other way on another vote? That wouldn't make much sense. The Board of Supervisors would vote, and whether that vote was would get carried forward by the two representatives.
It's correct, they're the same five people on the board. There have been several times in my tenure at the Water Agency where they've made a decision either as a county supervisor against the position of a Water Agency or vice versa on different issues. So for some of the water supply transmission projects, they've countered the county comments and have overruled those voting for Water Agency projects, and there have been vice versa too. So I think there is, I think they look at their responsibilities as the Sonoma County Water Agency Board of Directors as such, and then as the Board of Supervisors, depending on the issue at hand, you know. So here, you know, the, both agencies by law are GSA eligible agencies, or entities, and so that's, does, those five people would have two seats under the, under the structure, that's true. But, you know, they are, it's incumbent upon them to, again, look at the whole GSA interests under a JPA.
Thank you. Is that it? Councilmembers coming up? Any questions?
No, no questions, thank you.
Councilmembers listening? No, I didn't really have any questions. I think if we get further into it, the advisory vote, or the suggestion on this is to have that advisory panel of 18 people, and voting on something, and then have it go to the board, God bless them. So with that in mind, if no further questions, I'll open up for public comment, if anybody has any public comment on this. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got notes all over the page, we'll see if we can get them roughly in order, Jay will do my best. So concerns about JPA, the concern is all the difficulty is always getting the voting right. Everybody fights over it, we see this in every JPA adoption, so it's nothing new under the sun. I'm looking at this, especially this two-tiered voting system, let's start with that. There must be some people that think that the folks in the city can't count, because I look at this as this is the case, that we have two separate blocks, one is a block of six, one is a block of three. To pass anything, you need four from the block of six and two from the block of three, which means that that block of three, all you need is two of those people to effectively block any single action. So that means that the Resource Conservation District, or the PUC-regulated small individual water districts, could frankly block anything, any city, whether it's one as big as Cotati or one as small as, for example, Santa Rosa, could block them at any time. That's totally unacceptable, and it's crystal clear that that's a problem. That's a huge issue. From my, from my mind, that's a non-starter. I looked at the recommendation for unanimous voting to join the joint power- I look at the recommendation for unanimous voting to join the joint powers agreement. I look at the example of that with the Waste Management Agency, that has been a huge issue for this county, we're paying the price for it. I could see a higher, definitely higher two-thirds, that's pretty normal. I can tell you even Sonoma Clean Power, just trying to work through relatively simple things with a two-thirds vote, it's very difficult. You'll never be able to fix any mistakes this way, and I guarantee you'll have mistakes. I look then at the supermajority required things. It's just about everything you're going to do. GSA adoption amendments, annual budget, I could say some of these, GSA adoption amendments, annual budget, including capital projects, large capital projects over a certain threshold, perhaps even property acquisition, because that may get into legally taking property. I could see those being two-thirds votes, I have that flexibility, but you've got something here that's designed to be molasses. My concern about the Resource Conservation District too is this, I was aware of this because they came before MAFCO back in 2013, when we first started talking about GSAs in a merger of the Southern Sonoma County Conservation District and Sodiomi, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And I suspected I would see them down the road here, and I understand that they have lobbied rather strongly through the state as an interest group to have this voting seat. And they do very good work, they're funded, I believe, if I have this right, Jay, you can correct me, about 10 to 15 percent by taxpayer revenue, I'm not sure exactly where that stream comes from, the rest of it is from grants, and they help with a lot of environmental concerns in rural areas. But the Board of Directors, who will be making these decisions, taking a look at that, because I always look to see who the board is, because they're going to be that vote, is completely agricultural and dairy industries, which is great. These are people that should be strong voices at this table. I would be fully supportive of that, and frankly would complain if they weren't. But this is more than a vote in a table, a place at the table. This is a vote on the Board of Directors, and in fact, a vote where they can block very easily all the other cities. Now, I would scream just as much at this with Sonoma County Conservation Action being put in this position, because I see this, what we need to do with groundwater in the years to come is too important to turn it into something that's going to turn into molasses, in at least just my personal opinion. So, we've talked too long tonight, I'll just wrap it up. For me, I would prefer to see the direction, the feedback I would give my colleagues and friends would be, I'm not supportive of all seeing the RCD seat, but I understand that's already down the bridge, so that's fine, that may work very well. I do disagree with the PUC-regulated water districts, I understand they have a concern in this, but we all do. Everybody in this county has a concern about what happens with the groundwater. I would like to see no two blocks, just straight voting, a simple majority that then result in eight members. I am fine with having, letting the supervisors have two votes. If Santa Rosa can live with it and not fight, I'm sure I can let it go. But I would say if we come to a tie, then perhaps the Water Agency vote could stand down. That was the only thing I could think of, because I thought somebody might say, eight, what if you have a tie? But I'm fine with that, but I see definitely that two-tiered voting system, I will be, if somebody moves to adopt this resolution supporting the recommendations, I'm voting no tonight. I would rather give direction to see the working group work harder at this with direction. I suspect other elected officials, when they look at this, if they look at it in depth, will have similar concerns, I suspect. So, sorry for that, I hate to make you wait this late and then add more work to, I know which is a busy workload, but I have great concerns about this, because we've suffered too much with it already at other JPAs.
Thank you.
Nicely said.
You can tell I wasn't thinking about that.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I mean, I have the same concerns that Mark has, so it's a problem, and I agree with you that you really do need to get it right the first time, because it's tough changing it. And, but, God, this voting thing, every single time we do a JPA, it's the biggest hurdle that we have to get over, so.
That one's the thing about with the library board.
Yeah, the library board, yeah.
It's a good compromise, and we can, and we can copy.
Yeah, so, anyways, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Lawson?
Right, I would have added that last statement that Councilmember Landman just made, because that was, that was at least three weeks of meetings that we had at the library JPA level, was to get that across. So, that's the only part that I have any real heartburn with. The RCDs, that one doesn't really get me as much. Hadn't put a lot of thought into the PUC-regulated ones as far as having a vote at the table, but, but I think maybe it's a simple majority, I think would just be a lot easier than a two-tiered system as far as voting, that's my only comment.
Councilmembers coming?
And I'm, since you guys have all worked with JPAs, much more extensively than I have, I'm going to defer to your collective knowledge about all of this, and so I agree that there are a lot of issues that need to be ironed out, so.
Yeah, I looked at this, and I thought that voting system was going to be very difficult to manage at best. I understand there's a lot of stakeholders, but we're going from the wild, wild west with nothing, to now we've got the, you know, the gunfight at the O.K. Corral. So I don't know that it really goes to the other side there. So with that, I would welcome a motion on this.
I would move, we, I believe we've given direction to staff and our colleagues at the working group for the direction we'd like to see this go, and I would suggest that we do not adopt a resolution supporting the recommendations tonight, but instead, let the working group take this. Hopefully other cities will give similar feedback, and they'll be able to address some of these issues and bring back something we can all get behind.
So at this point, if we are, we don't necessarily have to even vote on this, we can send it back for further analysis.
Yeah, right, and just, just to, just to follow up a little bit before you actually take the vote, and also to get some clarification on the direction. So the two tiers, I understand, was set up to try to, as you probably expect, to try to balance some interests between land use and non-land use entities. I think that was the genesis of it, just as background, you know, as background, which you probably suspected. And to follow up on the initial motion that was made, I understand, this is how I interpret it, is that the advisory committee structure and the formation of a JPA is fine, from the council's perspective. It's the voting structure that's really the issue, both the block system as well as the thresholds for passing certain things?
Yes.
Right, so those two elements, the two elements for the working group to-
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Well, I also heard that we need to deal with the fact that there's an even number, so what do we do about that in a tie situation, if there's eight?
Oh, if there, you mean if the PUC-regulated entity was not on the board? Right.
I think that's something perhaps the working group could come back with an answer for, and with any luck, even with the board of eight, you may not even have that problem. So, you might be able to handle that one downstream. But I would agree with you, the other issues, the unanimous requirement for the joint change to the JPA agreement, and all the supermajority requirements perhaps being just a little too encompassing.
So the, so the, so the supermajority would be for any changes to the JPA, possibly GS, Groundwater Sustainability Plan, adoption and amendments, large capital projects, and property acquisition?
I would say that just in my experience with JPAs, that would be more close to what I've seen, the changing JPA agreement usually is a two. It is a higher threshold, and should be, that would be appropriate.
I'd be okay with that, the rest of the council is all right with it. Yeah, Jay, come on up.
Just to point a clarification on the CPUC mutual issue, by law SB 13, which came in after Sigma, provides that they have a place through agreement with, to be on the board of a GSA if they so desire. So this was, came in after Sigma, came in last year, so there's nine entities in this basin that will be on the board, nine seats.
So, okay, my apologies, it says here, although these entities, referring to the PUC entities, were not determined not to be eligible entities under Sigma, they would allow to be through the governing board through an agreement with the eligible entities. And I thought that was us agreeing to this, you're saying there's outside law that's forcing this, so much like the Resource Conservation District, they have a seat and that's it.
The Resource Conservation District is a GSA eligible entity-
Exactly.
-the state determines, so they're like you are, or Water Agency or County. The mutual CUP, CPUC-
Small water districts.
We're not in, yeah, we're not in originally a GSA eligible in Sigma, then there was cleanup legislation, SB 13, that provided for them to be on the GSA board through agreement. But CPUC-regulated water companies cannot be a participant in a JPA, so it has to be done through agreement with a JPA to be on the board, so it's a little complicated.
That has some clarity, and I think, frankly, I think one of my colleagues got it right. If you solve the problems with the voting structure, particularly that two-tiered issue, this doesn't become an issue. And then the benefit is we have nine, and we don't even have to worry about the tie situation.
So there'll be, there's, this was consensus from all nine entities until tonight on the voting, so that'll be the challenge, to go back, we spent several months on this.
Well, I would just say, because I look at this, if you look at the three different planes, different entities, but who are the common threads throughout there? The PUC, you're right, I'm going to say small water, just because I couldn't remember it either, and the Resource Conservation District. So they're going to have, as they should, I mean, I mean, they are stakeholders that are important in this, but not only are they getting a vote where a lot of other interest groups aren't getting a vote, they're on all three.
They're on all three.
Yeah.
So we started at simple majority here, and your fellow cities were adamant against that, and we ended up with the block system, and they wanted to separate the county and the Water Agency, so that's how we evolved into the land use.
All I can say for my fellow cities is they didn't do their counting, because if they take a look at this, they have absolutely no say whatsoever hardly here, because all it takes is two of those entities from the smaller district to say no, and you're not passing anything.
Just giving you a little background on, on the evolution of, of the last few months on that.
I mean, unless I'm missing something, I would love if somebody explained where this isn't the case, but so far I've run this through staff since I saw it, and I'm afraid this is the way it is, and that's, that's the big problem.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, I understand your position.
Okay, good.
That's just, I'm giving you the, the facts of how we got to that as a group, where we started and what the rationale was, and-
And I wouldn't be treating you fair if I didn't take my hat off for understanding the huge array of interests on this vitally important issue, and just how difficult it is to make this happen. I have a sense of that, so I, do you have a small sense of remorse adding to your workload?
Well, in Sonoma Valley, we do have a majority vote for that GSA, that's what we agreed to there. It was just that the rest of the cities in this basin felt, felt very strongly for the blocked system that we ended up with, so.
Yeah, I hope they're elected-
But they might not have understood the ramifications of that and how that might play out, maybe.
I hate to say that, I hate to say that about my colleagues, but I would think so, because this is not advantageous to their citizens whatsoever.
Right, no, it's clear you have a different position, so we'll have to take that back to the group and continue to discuss it.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, and thank you for the work you're doing.
All right. Ms. Donahue?
I can't speak to the other entities, but I just wanted to let you know that the town of Windsor has not taken this matter up yet, so they are still very much considering the appropriate structure, for what that's worth.
I hope you would be willing to share some of the legal concerns from a city's standpoint then, because perhaps that hasn't been as clear to people looking at this.
So I think you have an idea of what the-
Yeah, I think, I think we understood the, the motion, which was accepting the JPA structure, the advisory board composition was okay, and don't like the voting structure, specifically the two-tier block voting and the vote thresholds, and particularly unanimity for that one item, but it would just be two-thirds for JPA, GSP, adoption, large capital, and property acquisition, everything else would be majority plus one, 51 percent.
Okay, and I don't recollect if we have a second on that.
I'd be happy to second that.
I think you made that motion, didn't you?
All right, then I'll second it.
Okay, all on fire? Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. This is why I think we talked about limiting the times because of efficacy. Yeah, now we're going back to the public hearings on item 10B, and Ms. Parker is here. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening again. We can go through this one quickly, I know everyone's probably tired of talking, so I'll, I'll make it short. This last action item is an economic development tool of sorts that, that we've put together, not the only ones that do it, of course, it's a simple fee deferral program. Briefly, as, as you know, the city has adopted a variety of development impact fees over the course of several years, and those fees are meant to offset the cost of development or the impact of development on the city's systems, whether those are streets, or water and sewer systems, or parks, or affordable housing. So typically, a development application or building permit, I should say, comes through the process, and the fees are generally all collected at the time of building permit issuance. There are a few exceptions to that in the municipal code, but as a practice, we, we collect them all before we issue a building permit. So what that means is that for the developers of housing and commercial and industrial projects, they are basically financing the costs of the development impact fees over that entire construction and sales or leasing period. And so, this program as it's structured would defer the time of payment until final inspection or certificate of occupancy, so it, it defers it until the time that the impact would actually be felt on the system. And the way it would be executed would be through an agreement, a recorded agreement. We would estimate the fees, that would all be set forth in an agreement that would come back to the council, and that development would be, excuse me, that agreement would be worked out between the city attorney and staff, other staff members, to something that was acceptable to the city attorney. So, just to give you an example of what some fee amounts are, these are especially, they can add up very quickly, and if you're talking about a, a housing development, for example, where the units are sold as construction is still occurring, the builder developer is usually pulling multiple permits at a time, so if our fees are in the $45,000 per unit range, this could be a deferment of $450,000 to $500,000 for them from the time of permit issuance. So it, it can quickly add up to something that is significant to a development, and the downside, there is no downside really to the city, because we're not incurring the, any impact until it's actually tenanted or sold. And so, we have really felt that it's a kind of a win-win situation, so long as all the agreements are tight and they're recorded and we're collecting fees on the process side, we think it makes sense for everybody all around. I think in the ordinance, you can see how it would, would play out. We're not allowing in the draft language for fees to be deferred for longer than 24 months, so that would be the time of an open building permit, so if someone has pulled a permit, but they've not completed construction within two years, generally something's going on that would make it such that we would want to start collecting those fees. Secondly, we're not recommending that fee amounts less than $10,000 be deferred, it just doesn't make sense for us, less than that. The applications would be filed at least 60 days prior, that would give staff time to get the agreements executed in place and for it to come to the council, so that you could see it on a case-by-case project, or project-by-project basis. All fees would be due as, as proposed, due and payable upon sale or transfer of the property. No assignment of the deferrals would be recommended without the approval of the city attorney, so she would be reviewing those to make sure the securities and language was in place in case of a transfer. And finally, just in practice, we do a, what we call a pink slip routing, not your human resources kind of pink slip, but sheet where all the departments and the fire districts sign off before we issue the final inspection, final certificate of occupancy. sign off before we issue the final inspection, final certificate of occupancy on a project, so that is the time that we would hold that form at the last step with administrative services until the payment had been made for the deferred fees. So that's the way we've envisioned the project. If the council agrees to introduce the ordinance tonight, we would start working shortly on an agreement form. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions at you.
Thank you. We'll start down here. Ms. Skuman, House Member Skuman?
Um, thank you. No, just overall, I think this is great, because you indicated as well in the staff report that it would be helpful for people who are looking to develop right now, so I'm very supportive of that.
Thank you. House Member Delphine. Ms. Mayor.
Um, so it says that these will get recorded against the property, and they have to pay for, for all of that. So what happens if this gets recorded against the property and they decide to sell the property, and let's say the people that they're selling it to don't want to do the same thing? What, kind of, how do you get out of that?
I can let Robin jump in if she wants to complete the answer, but, so if, if a project gets sold and there have been permits issued on it, it's generally going to be in the buyer's best interest to complete the construction and go forward, simply because building permits expire as well, they have a life on them. So the agreement that I've been formulating, and Robin, Robin has many improvements to make to it, I'm sure, but the agreement as it's set forth right now, if the property is transferred, would require immediate payment of the deferment.
Yeah, that's typically what I've seen in these agreements, is you do make the payment, and the ordinance refers to a deed of trust, a security, so the way that I've drafted agreements like this is that essentially the city is loaning, it's like a loan, we get a promissory note, we owe you X amount of money under these conditions, secured by a deed of trust. Now, downside with that is almost always you'll get your principal lender requiring subordination of your deed of trust, so the chances of ever really foreclosing on anything like this are, are very slim, but you do have a note that you can sue on if something does go awry. But generally, if you have a property transfer, they're going to want to have clearance on the title, we could also file a lis pendens, which would, you know, pretty much require clearance, so.
So it does kind of tie up the title, so what they want, clean title of a property unless they take care of it.
Correct.
It, it's not a clean title. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then the only other question that I had was, what if you have a developer that comes in and doesn't necessarily want to defer fees? I know, it'd be shocking, but still, they don't have to defer their fees?
No, they wouldn't have to.
Okay. With that, I don't have any further questions, and I'd be willing to entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, a little broken public comment? Seeing that, I'll close public comment. Thank you. At this hour, you forget that there are people out there sometimes, so pardon me.
I would like to move to introduce an ordinance adding chapter four point one four, development impact fee deferrals to the City of Cattati Municipal Code.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
It's five oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parker. No correspondence and pending legislation. And now we'll go to the abbreviated city manager's report.
How do you know?
Yeah, I think you said that. I didn't want to hear anyone talk for a long time, it was late at night, but...
All acronyms.
It kind of made me laugh. So I will, I will keep it short. So I just want to announce a couple things, Coffee with a Cop, you know, we recently had one at Pete's Coffee, we're gonna have another one on November fourteenth, eight-thirty through nine-thirty a.m., it's a Monday. The last one was on a Friday, this is a Monday, trying to catch the other half of the work week, I guess. It was a, it was a good event, so we're continuing to do it.
Eight-thirty, did you say?
Eight-thirty to nine-thirty on November fourteenth. Yeah, yeah, for people that arrive a little bit later at work, I guess.
Exactly.
And also, our admin services department was busy with our fiscal year fifteen, sixteen audit, and the auditor just left today. Everyone's blurry-eyed over there. I mean, everything's good, the auditor was happy, which is nice to see.
Norm is still with us, so that's good.
What's that?
Norm is still with us, so that's good.
Right. Yeah, the auditor had nothing but good things to say, so it was all good, it just, you know, there's a lot of prep that goes into that before the auditor sits down and goes through everything, or there's, I should say, there should be a lot of prep that goes into that. That's what makes a happy auditor, which makes a happy...
You gotta hide the bodies.
Yeah. Just on some construction updates, downtown specific plan, all the streetlights are on now, there was a tie-up with PG&E, I'm turning some of the lights on, they're all on now, except for one, I guess one's flickering, but we'll look into that. And the paving, as you know, is complete, and it was, the conditions were ideal for it, so it should be durable and last a long time for us. The crosswalks and striping are now scheduled for, it's looking like the end of, or early November, end of October, hopefully as soon as they can get out there for some of the rainy weather and things like that to lay them, so. The mosaic is also expected to begin at any time, depending on the weather, and the monument signs will go up, and I think around the same time as striping, so end of the month, early November, so, yeah, yeah. And South Preservation, which is the one through downtown, so those crosswalks are the same as the crosswalks in the down, in the Gateway Project, so the same contractors doing them both at the same time, so early November, they're gonna get done, or late October, early November. And notices will go out to businesses ahead of time, because there will be, on that day that they're doing it, there will be a road closure, or detours around the crosswalk locations. West Cattati Water Main Project, as the name would imply, it's West Cattati Water Main, but actually, it's, that part of the project's picking up at Rancho Cattati Shopping Center. If you've been out there to that shopping center, you see the excavator out there and the pipe and stuff on the ground, which is currently postponed because of the rain, but it'll be, it'll get going again here shortly when the rain eases up. Corinne Barclay and Greg Rasmussen of Grab South Brew Company held a grand opening this weekend, this past Saturday and Sunday, to, I hear rave reviews, don't know if any of us have been there yet, but at least not for the ribbon cutting, we've been there before. So if you don't know, Rasmussen, the brewer, has received over a hundred and fifty local, state, and national awards for his beer, and was named the Sierra Nevada Home Brewer of the Year twice, as well as the Samuel Adams Long Shot Home Brew Contest winner in two thousand and fifteen. Corinne handles the business side of the operation, has been regularly been in City Hall for the last several months on permits and inspections and so forth. We invite everyone out to check out the facility if you haven't already been, the improvements inside are actually quite nice. They spend a lot of time making it really good, really nice in there. And they're at seventy-nine fifty Redwood Drive, which is Apple, not Apple Valley, the...
Gravonstein?
Gravonstein Business Center, yeah, right there, on Redwood Drive, one sixteen. And they also have a website, grabsouthbrewco.com. And the other business that I've been talking a little bit about, Sweet Expectations, is the Gourmet Dessert Bakery. They, they're holding the ribbon cutting on Thursday, November third, from five-thirty to seven p.m., where they're finally opening the retail side of it, though waiting season's, you know, tapered off, and they're gonna, they have already opened the retail side, but they're gonna have the grand opening ribbon cutting then. And Carolyn, the owner and master dessert baker, comes to Cattati with more than twenty-eight years of experience catering and creating custom confections. Her interior looks nice, and she's been great to work with, and she's at eighty ninety-nine La Plaza, you also can visit them online, yoursweetexpectations.com, and they did provide us with some samples, I guess, which everyone loves.
And they're not here tonight?
They're not here tonight.
Samples.
They don't last long.
That's not cupcake fairness.
Yeah.
It's not.
I'm sure if they were here at seven, they would be gone already, so, yeah. Just some projects and planning, Hundred Valparaiso, which is also now in, in the current iteration, known as Kessin Ranch, was, went through design review on October twentieth, and will be going to planning commission in the, we expect in the near future. This is a forty-five lot subdivision at the intersection of Valparaiso and Old Road Highway. I will skip over most of the recreation news, because I've talked about it before, but just a reminder that, I believe it's December first, second, and third, we have the three days of Festive Fun, which is the, the pub stroll on a Thursday, the tree lighting on a Friday, and then the shop and stroll on a Saturday. So that'll be coming up early December. And the following weekend, we have, we have Breakfast with Santa in the Cattati Room. So anyway, lock went on in early December. And then finally, oh, this is kind of exciting, I know you're all excited to hear about this. Everyone's just like, shut up and move on, but this is actually, this is actually a good thing. So our Train Depot, last week, the SMART Board authorized the, the general manager of SMART to enter into lease discussions with our, with us around Train Depot. So they want to use the, all, all of the interior space of the Train Depot as their Sonoma County Customer Service Center. So it's pretty exciting news. And once we have the details of that worked out in the lease discussions, then we'll, we'll come to council with the rest of the RFP that I talked about before. Now suddenly, a lot of it's off the table, so we're gonna be talking about whatever's left.
Once again, showing we are the hub of Sonoma County.
We are, moving the hub from here to there.
That's right.
Yeah, so it, I think it'd be a good, in my opinion, it would be a good potential lease, VCE, because the other things that we're hoping to accomplish with the Historical Society, with the Chamber, with, you know, the tourism element, they all could be easily co-shared in that space, I think, in the lobby area. And they have normal operating hours, you know, Monday through Friday. And when the train starts up, they've, they, they didn't say that they're expecting to operate seven days a week, open seven days a week for a little while, until, you know, things kind of settle down. And then finally, the, well, actually, not finally, finally I'll shut up and that's it. That's all you need to know about tonight. Thanks. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Yeah. You're not getting off that easy. On page seven of my memo for, no, two things, one is Mr. Rasmussen, also had a nice article in the Press Democrat, I think it was on Sunday, in Sunday's paper, so it was really nice. I had mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, when we were talking about doing the repave of Old Red, that there was a storm coming in that weekend, would have been great if the contractors could have put something up in the road. They did a very small section of road with like the little reflective things that stick up, whatever they...
They did the whole road, but they all got...
But then they've all come off, so it's, with more rain coming this week on Thursday, Friday, and again on Sunday, I just wanted to throw it out there, if there's something they could do that would just define the lanes, because I was watching people, you know, go, they couldn't quite see the lanes they were going in, and it, when it rains, it just gets worse. Thank you.
Councilmember Skuman?
No, no questions, thanks.
Just one, there was, there was a light down on the, you know, where you make that corner on one sixteen, that light was not working, that one, it was just one.
I, I think that's the one that, yeah.
He got a text message about that, just the other day.
Okay, yeah, there's one, okay.
Yeah.
You'll go replace the bulb, right?
Or something, yeah.
Damian, you indicated that the paving on Old Red from the Northern Gateway that we just did, and the two ply, whatever the material that was, that's all completed?
The, the asphalt piece of it's completed, not the striping and the...
Right.
Other lane...
But the asphalt part of it, the paving portion of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it me, or does that paving seem wavy and not as smooth as what I would anticipate?
Yes.
So...
It's a, it certainly is a different, it's a different finish than you would get with, with a lift of asphalt. Typically, when they lay asphalt down, they lay it on a mat, and it's pretty flat when they compact it, so you don't get as much wave, I guess, or you don't feel as much of the underlying roadway through it. It, this is, you know, it's a pretty thin, you know, I think it was half inch or five-eighth inch coating, or double seal, so it's, not only is the surface a little bit rougher, I think, you know, I'd call it a little bit rougher than, than like compacted asphalt, you also can, even though they did a lot of work before they put that down to try to fix all of the cracks and defects in the asphalt, you still do, to some degree, in, in this one lane in particular, I think you feel a little more than the others, where you can still kind of feel some of the underlying patches that they put in, you know, because the patches aren't necessarily completely flat with the surrounding AC. So there is a little bit of that. So I don't think it's, I guess what I'm saying is I don't think it's your imagination, there is a little bit of that.
It's not hard.
But that's not a, but that's not a problem with the product, it's just the, it's the...
It's not a problem with the application of the product.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say, it's not a product, not a problem with the application of the product, it's just a product of the, the method, probably.
I envisioned it would be a little bit smoother and less wavy and rough, although it's not the three and a half inches of asphalt that we were talking about, whatever that dimension was. I thought when they were gonna do the underlying smoothing out and grading of that, that the new product would lie relatively flat on there, or more flat.
It, I mean, it, it does, I think there's, there's certain areas where you can feel the underlying patches. I mean, if anything, that might have been, you know, the prep work that was done when they were, when they were filling the cracks and the patches, and trying to get everything smooth, where they just didn't get it totally smooth, and so the overlying double fiber seal, kind of, you can feel some of that through it.
Do we have any recourse on any of that?
I, I don't know, I'd have to, I don't, I mean, I don't think so, but...
Like, none at eleven...
I mean, I don't, I don't think that the, that the product has any sort of guarantee in that sense, that it's gonna be totally, totally flat. I'm sure there's some standard industries, some standard industry tolerances that we can inquire on.
Variances?
I can inquire on.
I, I would suggest, in the southbound direction, drive in the right lane from one sixteen to La Plaza, and just see what you think. It just seemed, it seemed a little sketchy. That's not a technical term.
Southbound in the right lane?
Southbound, right lane, that was where I really noticed it.
Where it had the most underlying issues.
Yeah.
Isn't that underlying, underlying asphalt?
Maybe it'll get drivers' attention and slow them down, who knows?
That'd be great.
Yeah, we can check into that for sure, and I, and I, and I know you guys are all aware of this, but, you know, part of the, part of the, part of the test with this new paving method was really to look at, you know, a way that we could try to preserve the asphalt at a fraction of the cost of AC, and so it is a different, is, it's kind of a different, I guess you kind of have to change your mindset a little bit, in terms of what you expect with a new asphalt layer compared to a different paving method.
Yes.
Yeah.
I will certainly take that into consideration.
I mean, with, with that in mind, I mean, we will check into that, you know, comments.
When I look at Seed Farm and River Park, and I don't know if it was the same product that they came put down...
I think they just did a slurry seal, and they just have that all torn up right now, but all the...
I think it was more than a slurry seal, because I used to drive across every day going to work, when they put that in, and brand new, there was issues, and I think that, you know, they've had to come back and readdress it.
That whole street is all down to dirt right now.
Correct. Yeah.
We took up the street Seed Farm, and the street that goes by, that part of there.
Thank you, Mr. Ovid. It's, it's southwest to Seed Farm to Enterprise, and then to State Farm.
Yeah, they've cut the whole road.
I think they're actually doing their own experiment over there for reclamation on site, where they're gonna dig it up and recycle it and put it all back in.
Oh.
Everyone's doing experiments to try to do things for the same thing for less cost.
Thank you, Mr. Ovid, and I will move on to city council member reports. Vice Mayor.
Oh, just real, real quick, and maybe Damian can elaborate on this, the Republic is gonna start building the Murphat at Central, and so right now, they were taking all of the green waste there and kind of putting it in bigger trucks and getting it out, and with that being closed, we will need to be rerouting our green waste wall that is being built, so I know that it impacts our franchise agreement, and they will be having discussions...
So I know that it impacts our franchise agreement, and they will be having discussions with Damian on our redirecting that green waste directly to Redwood. And hopefully, that should make a change in our garbage rates, because we will not be bringing it to Central. It won't get weighed, it won't get the county fee, and it won't get the Waste Management Agency fee, which is already on it. But there will be a little bit of a cost for them having to drive it directly. So more, I'm sure, to report on that at some point.
It's ironic that we have to drive green waste farther away.
I know.
Councilmember Blachowicz?
Just quickly, I was able to catch the tail end of the library advisory board meeting on the 18th. They're doing a lot of interesting things with their new teen space, so that's good, trying to get teenagers a place to hang out at the library. And they're also, we're doing a fun thing with elementary school kids getting to cast a vote on who they would vote for as far as characters from Clifford books. So it was, well, yeah, who, yeah, exactly. So Clifford, Clifford the Red Dog or Pigeon. So, but it was just kind of a fun idea to get the kids, actually casting ballot votes and then having speeches and things like that. So, anyway, I just thought that was a fun, looking at all of our election stuff going on right now, was a, was a much more entertaining and fun way to get kids knowledgeable about the electoral process.
Did they mention anything about taking the Cattati name off the building on the Ronard Park Cattati Regional Library at the advisory board?
No.
Because they have.
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed that when I went by.
Right.
I will have to ask her about that.
Our neighbors are seeming to be less than neighborly.
I've heard in the past, it was a concern, and I believe was perhaps when the newer building was being built, that, and this was obviously before this administration and this board, that the city of Cattati was unwilling to invest with Ronard Park, to whatever degree Ronard Park did in doing that. So there was some lingering unhappiness with that. I would just say that, you know, given that the original library, in its original location over by Saveway, was way away from Cattati, and now the new location, beautiful it is, is even farther away, I don't know what the discussion was, but I can certainly understand why we were somewhat reticent to invest in that. And, you know, if our name's not on it, it makes little difference. I mean, that's essentially a way for an entity to say, look, we're serving a larger area, support us. And it still provides the same value to our citizens, which is really the main thing you want.
Last week, I was at the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities breakfast with Vice Mayor McKenzie, and referenced this. And there is lingering animosity and resentment from the fact that Cattati did not contribute at the time of development of the library, even though it's under a JPA and it's a Ronard Park Cattati Regional Library. He is still not very warm to that idea of having Cattati even on there, even though it does serve our constituents as well as Ronard Park.
If that discussion ever comes up again, we may not have contributed funds. I contributed six years of my life to that foundation to get that library built and to fundraise for it by creating all the documents. So you might want to maybe just remind them in any discussion that any of us may have with the staff over there, that we did contribute.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the meeting with the good news. When Cattati eventually annexes Ronard Park, which we know will just have to happen at some point, even Mr. McKenzie likes that idea, then we can put our name back in the library and this will solve everything.
So I told Mr. McKenzie that we, I would be following up with him regarding that particular issue. And then we went to our separate tables for the breakfast. So with that, I think that's it on the councilmember reports. Any public comment on non-action agenda items? Seeing none, I will close that. And with that, we'll adjourn at 11:30 p.m. Thank you all.